Okay, this September 16th, 2020 meeting of the Oyster River Corporate and School Board will come to order. The first order of business is approval of the agenda. The only wrinkle in it is Brian Jorgensen, who is a candidate for the vacant position, has a coaching obligation, which means he can't get here until 7:45. So I would like to, you know, just as a courtesy to him, allow him to like speak to us, even if that is kind of out of the order of public comment. Is that agreeable to people? Okay. With that adjustment, could I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise is our second. Second by Brian. All those in favor? Six in favor. The agenda is approved. Now we move to public comment for the first time in about six months. Glad to have everybody here. Each of you will have three minutes. I'll try not to stop you mid-sentence, but if you go over, I'll have to indicate that you need to conclude. We do ask that you keep your masks on when you speak. And we just welcome all of you for, glad you're here. So who would like to start? I think you're going to be speaking at the lectern down at the well of the auditorium. Just introduce yourself, say what town you're from, and then have your say, okay?
Good evening. My name is Matt Bacon. I'm a, I've submitted my name for the position. I live in Madbury, New Hampshire, and I have five students in the district. I have a daughter at the middle school and four children in Moheramit Elementary School. My family is heavily invested in the future of the district, and I would appreciate an opportunity to be a part of that success. Thank you for your time, and that's all I have.
Thank you, Matt.
Good evening. My name is Allison Jumper. I live in Durham. I have three children in the Oyster River schools. I have a first grader, a third grader, and a fifth grader. I would like to thank all of you for facilitating and prioritizing getting our elementary children back into school in person this fall. The hybrid model that my children are utilizing at Moheramit feels appropriate and safe as a way to send our children back to school during a pandemic. Thank you for giving our children the opportunity to be back in school with their teachers and their peers. I also want to thank the teachers and the parents of Oyster River, who are the backbone of our schools. Their commitment to our children will never be taken for granted, and their expertise is irreplaceable. I'd like to advocate for continued ramping up of in-person school for all Oyster River students. I implore you, as school board members and administrators of our schools, to be continuously working toward more in-person learning time for all students. If the hybrid model can safely work for the elementary children, it can safely work for the other levels of the Oyster River student population as well. I personally was confused as to why no hybrid option was offered for the middle school students, especially since the district had researched and laid out hybrid middle school options that were feasible. Certainly, the youngest of the middle school students, the fifth graders, should have the option of a hybrid model of school. In many other communities, fifth grade is considered elementary school. These children are very young, and long-term remote learning isn't developmentally appropriate for them. Please consider instituting a hybrid option for the middle school students as soon as possible. Three additional concerns I would like, I would be grateful if you would take time to consider and address are: Given that we know how valuable in-person learning time is for elementary students, could the school board consider revising the currently established schedule so that the elementary students could participate in in-person school five days a week? What level of COVID-19 in the community would be low enough for all students to access some degree of in-person learning in the Oyster River schools? When will all students return to a traditional model of school? And could the district please provide to Oyster River parents easy access to what curriculum changes are occurring across all academic levels, K through 12, as a result of the move from traditional to hybrid and remote models? For example, in a traditional model, what, sorry, in a traditional model, what will the same, what will, what would a third grader be exposed to by the end of the first, I lost it there, sorry? For example, in a traditional model, what curriculum would a third grader be exposed to by the end of the first quarter? What curriculum will that same third grader be exposed to by the end of the first quarter under the hybrid model? Will there be long-term shortfalls in the coverage of curriculum by the end of the academic year in June of 2021 due to the move to hybrid and remote models? I believe there is confusion in the community about potential changes that are happening to curriculum across all levels, from kindergarten through 12th grade. Finally, and most importantly, I again want to thank everyone in the district who's working so hard to keep our children engaged in learning during a pandemic. My husband and I are so thankful for all that you are doing. As we move past the first steps of getting back into school safely, we are hopeful that we, as parents, can work together with the Oyster River schools to maintain the integrity and rigor of an Oyster River education for our children, even when hybrid and remote models of education are still necessitated by the pandemic. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Greg Poitras. I live in Lee, New Hampshire. My son, Jack Poitras, is a junior at Oyster River High School. He's a varsity member of the golf hockey and tennis teams. He's also the captain of the Oyster River High School golf team this year. I'm here to briefly talk about three somewhat interrelated topics. Number one, the recent rule announced by the athletic director concerning participation in non-Oyster River sports. Two, student-athlete transportation to school sporting events. And three, the COVID liability release that all parents were asked to sign as a condition of their child participating in Oyster River sports. Taking those in turn, so the rule in its essence says that Oyster River Fall Athletes playing for outside club/teams that compete outside of a certain region will need to make a choice between the private club or Oyster River. Given that this rule disqualifies student athletes from competing in Oyster River athletics based on activities conducted during their personal time, and then only for participating in organized sports, I would ask whether this rule was approved by the school board, whether this type of rule needs to be approved by the school board, whether this rule is sufficiently clear to provide compliance guidance for parents, and why our students are only being disqualified for playing non-Oyster River sports versus the numerous other activities that pose higher risks from an exposure perspective. My hope is that the board will reconsider this rule. Busing. I do not like the idea that Oyster River student athletes must now find their own transportation to games and off-site practices. There is a reason for buses. They are safe. Now, instead of a team being transported in a COVID-compliant manner on a safe school bus, the reality is that dozens of relatively new teenage drivers are driving themselves and their teammates to these venues. Buses are safer than cars, both in the event of a motor vehicle accident and as it relates to ensuring social distancing, masks, and other COVID safety rules being followed. I would ask the board to reconsider busing for sporting events. And finally, the release. When the school board approved fall sports in August, it was told that parents would need to sign agreements whereby they acknowledged and assumed the risks of their children playing sports in an environment in which they could be exposed to COVID. This is the approach recently hotly debated and ultimately taken by UNH. In actuality, the agreement that parents were asked to sign also includes an extremely broad liability release that purports to absolve just about everybody but the parents and the students from liability for COVID, even if the cause was due to the failure of a school representative to follow school-established COVID rules. I'm going to read it.
I'm sorry, your time is up.
Okay. I would just ask for the board to reconsider this form of release.
Thank you.
Thank you for considering my comments.
Good evening. My name is UC Terrell from Durham. Formerly, I served as founding director of UNH's Center for Social Innovation and Enterprise as a national program director for an educational nonprofit. Currently, I'm a doctoral candidate at UNH and also a candidate for the school board seat. This auditorium and this podium bring back memories. In 2013, I came down with my clingy three-year-old when the school board was at this level and the podium was there. And as I made a public comment, I think it was on equalizing enrollment, my toddler went up to the stage and started walking along the edge and nearly fell on top of the school board member, Al is nodding his head, who was sitting at the end of the table. And I was oblivious until the room gasped in unison behind me. I'm happy to say that my fifth grader is now thriving as it is in remote learning. So this podium is memorable for me. I have presented to you in the past primarily on the Mandarin and World Languages programs. I tend to do most of my work behind the scenes on the Economic Development Committee, on the Superintendent's Screening Committee back in 2011, and with the Oyster River Chinese Program. As you know, it started with a group of parents in partnership with the University of New Hampshire, really proving a concept that you could run an after-school program in Chinese language and culture at the elementary schools, and they would come and the quality would be good. We were able to keep the board apprised over the years, and in 2018, as you know, voted to expand Mandarin and to begin the World Languages earlier. Dr. Rotner's support was especially meaningful in that, in that vote and over that campaign. I am eager to join the school board at this moment because I believe it's a really pivotal moment. First, the pandemic causing immeasurable strain. The board must guide our district to develop our sea legs. And by that, I mean change is constant. It's not going away. And so our responses must be adaptable, data-driven, and over-communicated. Second, equity and social justice. The remote learning only exacerbates the digital divide and inequalities of all kinds. The Black Lives Movement, the Black Lives Matter movement has also shown us more about racist systems and anti-racist remedies. And finally, excuse me, the idea that we have the opportunity now to put in place systems that serve all of this, our students, and lift all of our constituents up. I'll note also that with 5% of the district's families of Asian descent, if elected, I would work to bring those voices into our conversations. And third, I know we'd wish that Dr. Morse would stay forever, but with his impending retirement, it's the time now to consider which direction we would like to take the district and where we need to strategically shore up our systems for this important transition. I have a lot to learn. I look forward to listening a lot and digging in. I hope to take the plunge onto the school board, though, in a less dramatic fashion than my son nearly did years ago. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you, UC.
Hello. My name is Heather Smith, and I am also applying for the open board member position. My husband and I and our two kids live in Durham. My daughter is a fourth grader, and my son just started kindergarten at Moheramit. I read that Tom was going to have to give an overview of all the candidates, and I thought, man, that's rough. So I thought maybe I might introduce myself.
You can do it, okay?
And I'll tell you a little bit about, a bit more about me, and then some of my ideas for the school board. So my husband and I are both Ohio natives. I graduated with my bachelor's, master's, and doctorate in civil engineering at Ohio State. After graduation, we moved to Baton Rouge, Louisiana, and I worked at LSU. When I was at LSU in the civil engineering department, I was on the search committee for a new dean. I helped in the creation of a new degree program in coastal and ecological engineering, and I worked closely with the Office of Diversity in the College of Engineering with their minority outreach. We moved to Durham in 2013. I worked at UNH for two years before transitioning to my current job for Arcatis, which is a global engineering consultancy firm. When my daughter started kindergarten, I started volunteering in small ways with Moheramit PTO. The following year, I joined the executive committee as the fundraising chair, and then for the past two years, I was the Moheramit PTO chair. My term expired in June, so that was pretty exciting for me. I also helped coach the first Lego League program at the elementary school, and I tried to help coach my daughter's field hockey team. We'll see how that goes. And you've probably seen my husband, Brad, coaching soccer. So I believe in service and community building, community engagement. We tried really hard to focus on community building through our events and our fundraisers with the PTO at Moheramit. I've worn a lot of hats and have a pretty diversified skill set, which I hope I can bring to bear for the challenges the school board is facing, and I am deeply committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion. So my big push to join the school board is I want to be of service. I want to be part of our continued growth, and similar to what UC said, I think we need to think about how we can build resiliency in all the different levels between administration down into the curriculum itself. I think there are some fantastic opportunities in the way we embrace and utilize technology in both the administration and within our educational models, and I want to be active in the search for our next superintendent because I believe Dr. Morse does, in fact, want to retire at some point. So I want to thank everyone on the board for their service. I want to thank everyone for their consideration, and I thought I'd leave on a nice, fun note that Tom could use. Fun fact about me, my public elementary school music teacher was a harpist, and through some weird quirk of fate, my elementary school had eight harps. And so from fourth grade to sixth grade, I was part of the touring Patton Elementary School harp group. So fun fact about me. Thank you guys so much.
Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Rebecca Troop, and I'm also had put in my letter and resume for the school board position. And I was driving over here, and I was sort of taking off my mom hat and taking off my mental health center vice president hat and trying to put on my, how do you talk to the school board about the fact that you want to sit into, into a seat, but really next to a seat that is now vacated because there's still a sense of reverency around that seat? And then, sitting here, and I was thinking on the way over about how proud I am of our community. Our community has faced so many big things. Recently, we have fought our way through them. We're still fighting our way through them. We are trying to navigate, we've navigated changes in the schools since I've been in this district since 2013. I've been involved, in fact, I've stood in front of you. I've debated with some of you, and in my parent hat. And when my son, I have two sons, one just graduated from the high school, the other's a freshman, and we've gone all the way through Mastway, all the way through the middle school, and now all the way through the high school. The pride I have in this community is immense, and just sitting here and listening to these people, I mean, I'm listening to these people, and I'm thinking like, I don't want to have to choose one because you have some amazing human beings in this room and people that are coming, you know, out for the first time since, since you've had this meeting just to make public comments again, like it's a normal world, you know? And I wrote you all a three-page-long letter that accompanied my resume that I'd sent to Dr. Morse and to Wendy, you know? And that outlined, here's my why, why I want to be a school board member. Here's my professional qualifications of the past 25 years, and, you know, I could stand here and I could talk about my strategy background and my communications background or my tactical project management background. But the most important, I think, for whomever it is that you choose, is the personal qualifications that I outlined that I think board members need to uphold and have in their core. You know, people have skills and people have personal qualities, and I think that a human being's success in whatever capacity that they're in is their ability to take off one hat and put on another and to pull up those qualities, whether they're professional skills, personal skills, their characteristic skills, and look at them through and use them successfully through the lens of whatever hat they're in. I've stood here in front of you before as a parent. Whomever sits next to, next to Mr. Rotner's empty seat can't sit there as a parent, they can't sit there as their own interests, they can't sit there as the causes that they bring. They have to sit there as a representative of a democratic representative government, which is essentially what this is, and look at it from the lens of the best, in the best way, and utilize their skills and qualities in that manner. How can that person serve to support all kids, all community members, all taxpayers, all business aspirations, everything that you all deal with on a daily basis as a school board member? That's the number-one quality that I think that I can bring to this because that's what I've had to do for 25 years in my jobs, working with my board of directors, working with the community, working with clients and patients. You can't ever have your own personal lens. It's whatever hat you happen to wear at that moment. I applaud all of you for all the work you've done. I know I was in a lot of contact with Dr. Morse this summer, and I would be just amazed at the hours that I knew that you all were working, and I, and I really do applaud that and thank you for that because I know it's an immense amount of time. So thank you.
Thank you, Rebecca.
Hi, my name is Debbie Harmon, and I've also applied for the position of the open position on the school board. Can you all hear me? Okay.
A little bit louder, maybe?
A little hard to hear you.
Okay, I'll, I'll speak up. I'm a resident of Lee. My husband and I moved here in 2001, and our oldest son started at Mastway that year. We have three children, and our youngest is now a freshman at the high school. So I'm starting my 20th year as a parent with children in the school district, four more to go. Like many families that have moved to our district, they moved to our district, many families move here because of the reputation of the schools, the excellent schools that we have here. We also had heard about what wonderful schools there are here, and we wanted to move to one of these three towns because of that. I remember when the, we were out with the Realtor looking at different houses, and I grew up in Massachusetts. My husband was living a couple hours, grew up a couple hours north of here, and we were living up around Newfound Lake. And we were looking at houses with the Realtor and noticed how high the taxes were in all three towns and said, gee, you know, the taxes are kind of high compared to where we're coming from. And she said, well, she said, you know, the way I look at it is you're paying for your kid's education, you're investing in your kid's education. And I said, and she went on to talk to us about how great, wonderful the schools were here. And I said, yeah, that's, that's great, but you have five kids and we have one, so you're getting a better deal. But ironically, 20 years later, I found myself using her same spiel when last year I was on the middle school PTO. I was on it for four years. Last year was my fourth year, and my son was in eighth grader, my youngest. And I was asked to join the Go Vote Oyster River Middle School Committee for the new middle school. And we all had, it was a wonderful experience. Everybody brought something to the table, and my task was to attend different events in the community and at the schools, go to the primary and talk about the middle school project, and debate people on Facebook, which I didn't know that, that was part of one, part of my job, but did that. And also, just before the vote, go out and actually go door-to-door in my community and talk to the taxpayers about this project. And ultimately, it was basically the same spiel, how great the schools were, what high quality of education we have, and that, our taxes are high, it costs money for them to get this high quality of education. And that basically, the, you know, I felt that we were wasting some of that money trying to maintain that building. I know that you on the school board have a lot of difficult and important decisions to make, and especially now. If I am selected to be on the school board, I will do my homework, be prepared for the meetings, attend all the meetings, and help make these difficult decisions. And I appreciate your consideration. It would be an honor to serve with you all on the school board. Thank you.
Thank you, Deborah.
Hi, my name is Jessica Lewis. I'm a resident of Lee, and I have two children at Mastway, a kindergartner and a first grader. I've also submitted my name for the board for consideration for the vacant position. In my professional life, I'm a pediatric occupational therapist. I've worked with children in mental health settings in schools and in outpatient clinics, and I currently work in the Manchester area with the Birth to Three Services, getting children ready for school. I feel like the situation has been unique, and the way the board has handled things has been very admirable. I'd love to be able to contribute to this. I feel like my history of working with children with development of a wide background and a wide range of abilities, and my background with trauma-informed care would bring a unique perspective. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you.
Can you hear me okay? Is that loud enough? Could you speak up a little bit? Yep, okay. Hi, my name's Marie O'Neil. I'm from Madbury. I have three children in the Oyster River school system. I am not submitting my name as a candidate for the school board position, but I'm excited to see so many moms are doing it because I think it would be nice to have additional representation from mothers on the board. I came here tonight because I felt compelled to speak about my family's experience with the start of this school year. I'm not an educator, I'm not a scientist, I'm just a parent who has been struggling to get my kids schooled since this crisis began in the spring. So first of all, I'd like to, oh, so sorry, I have a fifth grade, sixth grade daughter in the middle school, a third grade son at Moheramit, and I have a three-year-old at Live &amp; Learn who's been back in school full-time since June 1st. So first, I'd like to commend the sixth grade teachers on the explorers team at the middle school for the programming they've rolled out. We began the year with a lot of trepidation, and to be honest with you, I just couldn't be more pleased with how things have gone. They've, they've laid out a wonderful structure that my sixth grader is able to independently follow at home. The teaching is well-executed, and we receive detailed communications each week from the teacher, so I feel like I have enough information to provide support when she needs it, but she's doing a great job independently, working on her own. It's a synchronous online learning environment, and it's really been thoughtfully rolled out, which is a sea change from the spring. Really well done, and congratulations to all of them. The reason I came to speak, though, tonight was about our experience at the elementary level. We had been hoping for a full-day in-person learning experience for my third grade son. When this wasn't offered, we went with what we thought was the next best thing, which was the hybrid model. My expectations for the hybrid model were for a full day of learning. I expected my son would be in person for half the day and home learning synchronously for the other half of the day, and that this would be five days per week. Instead, he appears to be going to school for two and a half hours per day, only four days a week. The other three and a half hours of the school day are at home learning, which seems to be a return to the spring version of remote learning. The fifth, the fifth day, for reasons I cannot understand, is a full day at home with some structured homework assignments. And today was our first experience of that, and I can tell you, my son played a lot of video games and watched a lot of TV while my husband and I tried to work. So this is not working for him. My son, like so many other children, needs the expertise, the patience, and creativity that I think only professional teachers can provide. He needs the social interaction available in school. My husband and I work full-time. My husband is outside the home, so the full burden of remote learning falls to me while trying to maintain my full-time job. We're just not able to oversee his schoolwork at home, and nor are we able to motivate him to participate in learning the way that his teachers are able to do. I know this because I lived it in the spring, and I saw it fail for our family. I know this because I lived it in the spring, and I saw it fail for our family. I feel like my son is being short-changed more than half of his learning under this hybrid model. I don't understand how the Wednesdays at home and these four half-days of school are going to qualify as full school days, and I'm surprised that the school board is okay with this. I am here tonight appealing to the board to treat these past two weeks of the hybrid elementary for what it actually was. This was an orientation to the new normal for in-person learning, a transition period to allow the children to become accustomed to wearing masks and remaining socially distant from friends while in school.
I'm sorry, your time is up. So, could you conclude?
So, in conclusion, I guess what I'm asking you to do tonight is to use the time to determine how you could convert this model into a more effective in-person model. I would like to see my son return to school in person five days a week. And if the numbers suggest that they need to convert to remote learning, I think that establishing the structures and routines in a full day of class in person makes a lot more sense than bussing to and from and lunching at school. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Yeah.
My name's Adam Gilzdorf. I am the father of two high school boys. One's a freshman and one's a senior. I live in Durham. I'm actually also myself a K-12 graduate from the Oyster River School District a few years ago, though. I think many of you received a version of this letter. I sent it over to the superintendent today. I had found out just recently that this was happening today, and the opportunity to talk. I would first just want to, my direction is a little bit different, but I would want to echo many of what, many, my personal experiences are very similar to what the woman who just spoke, where my kids are not necessarily having what I feel is a productive time at home. And I want to just implore that the district consider whatever they can to take the risk to move forward with as much in-person learning as possible. I write to you because of my growing concern of what's been happening with the children and all the children that are remaining at home instead of being in the classroom during this time of COVID. I have increasing concerns over both the quality of the education and the impacts of the intensified isolation that occurs when all children, and personally, my children, are left to learn at home on their own. My children, my wife and I both work. They are home alone for three days a week to try to get this figured out. I am more deeply concerned about the lasting mental health and psychological issues it can result from the amount of time that children are spending alone, typically in bedrooms, online, in front of computers for many hours a day and many days per week. There has been obviously much coverage about this in the media, and this increased stress this has put on children and their families, I believe, is increasing the likelihood of the physical or emotional abuse that might happen and the isolation. Additionally, I've observed increased level of anxiety and depression in kids that have been isolated, unfortunately marinating in some of the social media and the news coverage the way this is being presented over the last many months. I understand that there are a lot of people that are concerned about the transmission and the after-effects, and that there are very dire circumstances for those that do get COVID, for some. I understand that Oyster River School District is doing, trying to do the best that it can, as so many districts are, to educate our children. But frankly, my children are getting as far from adequate in terms of the quality of education, but more importantly, what is being missed in respect to the soft experiences of being in the classroom. And I mean by this, the daily interactions with the students, the daily interactions with a teacher who can monitor and assess and provide support and individualize education and personal support. I think that the majority of educational content can be delivered remotely, but I do not feel that the students are getting what is most important from the relationship and the opportunities of being in a school and in a classroom in and around their peers. I think it's vital educational process and experience for students to have the opportunity to engage with the teacher face-to-face and whenever possible, one-on-one. There's no replacing being in the classroom and being in the school. As I mentioned earlier, there are certain risks that must be taken in order to achieve in-class instruction, but in short, I feel the risk is much worth taking, given the consequences. I, Anderson, I even, I'm sorry, I'm just jumping over because I'm assuming I'm about to run out of time. Statistically, children are at the least risk of getting COVID and any significant symptoms or, excuse me, coming down with significant symptoms or dying. The staff with whom they work are obviously the most susceptible. But I would like to remind us of all the statistical facts of the cases in New Hampshire in particular, which are very low, and that the death rate is very low. And, excuse me, and what typically Durham as a community is already, excuse me.
I'm sorry, we're going to have to ask you to conclude.
I guess I'm just advocating, as a former educator myself and as a parent, that the school district take the risk to do what is necessary to, whatever we can, to get our students back in the classroom. Okay? And I hope if I had the opportunity to read my letter, those of you on the board, I did send that around today. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment? Hey, thank you all for coming. It's good to have public comment back. Next order of business is the approval of the minutes. I have a motion to approve the regular minutes from September 2nd.
We'll move to approve the minutes from September 2nd.
Moved by Michael. Is there a second? Second by Brian. Are there changes? Hearing none. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, the minutes are approved. Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the district? Hearing none, right? Announcements, accommodations, and comments from the board? Denise?
I just, again, would like to thank the folks who came out for public comments and the people who continue to write letters and let us know how they are experiencing the model that we have at this, in place at this time. It's super helpful to get that feedback, and so, that's all. I just want to really thank folks for taking that time to give us that information.
Brian?
I just wanted to thank you publicly, Tom, for your kind words that you eloquently put out on Sunday for Kenny at his service. That was a great summation of the kind of guy he was, and it was good to see that everyone else felt the same way as well. And it makes you really, feels good to see the effect he's had on so many people's lives, besides ours. But we see at firsthand his passion, and the passion didn't stop here at the table. It continued on when he walked out the door. So, I just wanted to thank you for those great words.
Thank you. And I wanted to thank, I know Al, I know Todd Selig, I know there are a lot of people that had to put that, put that together. And so, thank you, Al, for your part in that, and the team from the town to get that together. I thought, I thought it was, it had that loose informal feeling that seemed like just totally appropriate for Kenny, you know, right? Nothing too fancy, nothing too...
I mean, again, it's truly amazing, and when somebody said that the Oyster River Community is great, it really summed it up for me. Rachel and Larry Brickner Wood were remarkable in that we were able to pull off, during the heart of COVID, a safe, really nice ceremony was pretty awesome.
So, I'd just like to echo what Brian said, Tom. I think you did an absolutely amazing job on behalf of the board. As always, you're very eloquent, but what, your remarks were heartfelt, funny, you know, really, I think you really summed up Kenny's essence, and I'm really grateful for that. And I'm also grateful for you, Al. In addition to working behind the scenes to make the event happen, I know you played a really important role in, you know, the time that Kenny was suffering. And so, I'm really grateful that you were able to do that. And last of all, I just want to thank everyone who's throwing their hat in the ring for the open seat. It's a daunting prospect, I think, to varying degrees, to want to take that on, and I'm so encouraged that we have so many great candidates to choose from. It's going to be a tough choice, frankly, but we're in a really, really good spot, and our community's going to benefit from it.
Thank you, Dan. Others?
District reports, Assistant Superintendent.
Good evening. It's nice to be back in front of the board doing my regular report. So, I look forward to doing these as we move forward. I have two things that I wanted to bring to your attention here that are timely, tied into things that are coming up. First of all, I just want to give you a quick update on New Hampshire standardized testing. You may recall, last spring, we went into a moat. The state waived all testing requirements, so there was no state testing done in the spring of 2020. We will resume the normal testing cycle in the spring. However, this fall, the state is also putting out a, what's called the interim assessment portal, which is a tool that is available to schools to use, that is an adaptive assessment that families can have their child, and teachers can have their child take, and it gives a current assessment based on the Common Core standards as it relates to the New Hampshire SAS test, so that people can get a sense of where their kids are at. We're working to put that out. As you can imagine, some of the challenges we're having, this is an adaptive test on computers, and it involves getting secure browsers installed on all the computers that are scattered about the district. So, we're working with Josh Olsted to get that to happen, to have that ready. But where our plan is, the test window is October, October 1st through the 31st, for this to be available, for students to be able to do it, and we will be making that opportunity available to kids. I do want to just say a quick word about assessment in general, because I think a lot of people have asked questions about how are we getting a gauge on where our kids at, are at entering into this school year, and how are we planning for instruction? In our district, we've had a number of tools that are in place that we are using. In fact, one of the things that was happening in the K-4 level over the first couple of weeks is a round of assessment being done with students. Kids were having, meeting with their teachers. They were doing benchmark, Fontispanell benchmark assessments for reading. We will be doing very shortly the STAR assessment for math and ELA. And for K and 1, they're doing the Acadience Assessment. So, there's a lot of information being collected by teachers as they try to assess where kids are at and make sure they plan for instruction. STAR continues all the way up through grade 10, so we'll be doing STAR assessment with all of our kids through, everybody through grade 9, and as needed, in grade 10. So, there's a lot, so there's a lot of information being collected. So, although the state did not do the testing in June, we are going to have a lot of information that teachers are going to use to meet those student needs. So, be on the lookout for more communication from the district about that. So, that's all on assessment. I also wanted to just give you a quick update and just to remind you a little bit about sabbaticals. Last year, we had two staff members who were on sabbatical. Leslie Ayers, who, a Spanish teacher at the high school, she did a sabbatical on K-12 world language instruction. She, in fact, she was here, well, not here, in the library, actually, presenting for the World Language Committee that presented to you in November. She was vital to that. And then, for the rest of the year, she was engaged in doing curriculum work throughout the district and also getting some curriculum credentials herself. And then, Kara Sullivan, an English teacher here at the high school, she had her sabbatical for the spring semester, and she did a project on utilizing the outdoors as part of the classroom to not only motivate learning, but to also aid in improving the mental health of students. And it couldn't have come at a better or worse time, depending on how you wanted to look at it, in terms of she spent a lot of time working with teachers across the district in all grade levels, finding ways to incorporate outdoor opportunities to help alleviate some of the stresses kids were under and so forth. Both of those teachers, Leslie and Kara, the final requirement of their sabbatical is to do a presentation to the school board and to the sabbatical review committee. So, I will be working with Wendy to find some dates for school board meetings, to have them come in and share the work that they've done. I think you're going to be very impressed by the work that they've done. Similar to, two years ago, we had Chris Hall on sabbatical, the quality of stuff that our teachers do, and given the opportunity to really pursue their passions, is just amazing. And lastly, just to talk about people who are passionate, John Bromley is on sabbatical this year. He's a science teacher at the high school, and he has requested to be on the agenda for your next board meeting to give you a brief overview of what he's doing. His goal is to develop a capstone project concept at the high school, and in order to do that, he wants to engage teachers, students, and community members, and thought he would like to start by talking with you. So, I have tentatively asked Wendy to put him on the agenda for the next board meeting so he can come in and kind of share with you his work. If you, if any of you know John, he's a very passionate guy, and he says he's going to get something done. He gets it done. So, I'm happy to answer any questions. Al?
I have a question that doesn't have anything to do with sabbatical and that. It really has to do with the computer. So, at the high school, for the 11th and 12th graders, they never had, they're like the group that kind of didn't get the computers that came in. And so, as we hand those out, when you did a form, you could either opt in or opt out, I think, of grabbing the computer. Did we want us, the 11th and 12th grade parents, to use that computer so it has like specific software on it so you can kind of monitor it? Or do we, does that not matter? And then, the second question is, if there's a significant number of parents that are 11th and 12th graders that are saying, we already have our own computers and we don't need those, could those computers actually be used for elementary kids that don't have a computer? Are there some equity issue with elementary kids?
The intention of the one-to-one computer, and actually, let me back up. Clearly, the delivery of computers for this year has delayed the process of issuing laptops to all 11th and 12th graders. The ones that have been issued so far are what we have available to students as needed. The intent is that we will be one-to-one at the high school in October when the delivery of the laptops arrives. And the intention of those laptops is to be given to the student to be used for all school-related matters. They are, all of the software they need, all of the capabilities they need to be able to do what is required in school are on those computers. One of the things we struggle with is when kids want to use their own laptop, we can't always provide the technical support, and this way, we can guarantee that we can support kids to use it. So, that's the intention of that. I'm sorry, what was the other part of that question?
Well, I mean, I think you kind of answered my question. So, so we will get, the 11th and 12th graders will, you want them to switch to the Dow computer and use that computer?
Yes. Ultimately, every student in the high school will receive a standard-issue laptop that will be good for all activities that they need to do at the high school. All right. Denise, yes?
Well, it was also mentioned SAT updates.
Yes, I'm, yes, the SATs, thank you for reminding me of that. Yes, the SAT will, will be implemented for all. They didn't do SATs for juniors last year as they were supposed to. You may remember, a couple of years ago, SAT was adopted as the state assessment for all juniors. It didn't happen last year. It is happening for seniors. That is happening on September 23rd. It is a pencil-paper test this year because that's the only way it is offered. When they do the spring version, it will be a computer version of that. But the one on September 23rd is for seniors only. We don't expect 100% participation just because many students may have sought out taking the SAT on their own when the in-school opportunity was not, were not provided. Okay, any other questions?
So, we will need a, somebody on the sabbatical committee. That's no urgency on that. When would you need, when does that start?
We start, the applications start coming in after the first of the year, so it's not until January. That's when the review committee, review committee assembles around mid-January, and it takes us about a month and a half to do our work.
Okay. So, people might be thinking, you know, if you'd like to be on that committee, just let me know, and I can nominate you.
And we're a fun group, so.
I'm sure. I would just like to interrupt. I don't know if Brian Jorgensen is here. Has he come in? Okay, why don't you take your turn?
Welcome here.
Right up to the, right up to the platform down there and...
This one here?
Yeah. So, you're busy coaching soccer, is that it?
Football.
Football, okay.
With first graders, which is an adventure.
Uh-huh, uh-huh.
While social distancing.
Okay.
So, it's a challenge.
Uh-huh.
Especially after six months.
So, as I said earlier, you know, just name, where town you're from, and you have like three minutes to say anything you'd like to say about your candidacy for the school board.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so my wife and I, with three little kids, live in Durham, right near campus, and two of our children are at Mo Haremit in third grade and first grade, and then one is just about one and a half. So, she'll be in school someday, soon. And the reason I applied is...
So as I said earlier, you know, just name where town you're from and you have like three minutes to say anything you'd like to say about your candidacy for the school board.
Sure, yeah. Yeah, so my, my wife and I with three little kids live in Durham, right near campus. And two of our children are at Moheramit in third grade and first grade. And then one is just about one and a half. So she'll be in school someday soon. And the reason I applied is, as I, as I've sat in during the last two years, we moved in here two years ago, I've been looking around for opportunities to serve the community that, that we've chosen to raise our family in. I grew up with very involved parents in Lebanon, New Hampshire, who are still there. And I learned from them early on that part of living in a community is, is serving that community, doing what you can with the skillset you have to be a benefit to the community. And so when I moved in, I began looking at what would be the, the different arenas in the community where I could serve and, and be a help. And with a strong public education background, with my mom teaching for almost 40 years in Lebanon, my sister in Dover, and she's now in administration, and my wife teaches in Greenland, public education has been a hallmark of my life ever since I was little. And the more I sat with the decision of what I wanted to serve in, it became clear that something within the school system is really where I wanted to, to give my time and energy and skill. Seeing the phenomenal job you guys have done navigating COVID and watching a lot of the online things just led me to realize this is where I wanted to invest my time. Mainly for the benefit of the children, my own children, but also the, the future children who are coming through this school district. I believe that public education is a key element in a child's development, not just academically, but socially, emotionally as well. And so my, my hope would be to come in as a learner, to come in as someone who's going to learn from the great work you guys are already doing and to look for ways to be helpful along that, that journey with you guys. So I don't really come in with an agenda or, or a certain project in mind, but rather really looking to, to serve the community and serve the children and the staff and the, the teachers as well by, by investing my time in the school board. And so, yeah, I look forward to you guys' consideration and thank you for your time.
Thank you, thank you. Okay, so I think we're ready to move to the superintendent's report. So Revision Energy, or do you want to have something?
I have a couple of things I'd like to say first. Along the lines that many of the candidates talked about in terms of the great communities that make up this district, there are a couple of organizations I'd like to recognize this evening. The Durham Evangelical Church has donated 2,500 reusable face masks to the district. I want to thank them for that effort. The Lee Congregational Church for allowing us to use the driveway for parent pickup at the Massway School, which prevents 155 from backing up considerably. So that was really awesome of the congressional church, congregational church, excuse me. And to the town of Medbury for letting us use the athletic field parking lot. Same issue, by using that parking lot, we prevent a massive backup of cars on the Medbury Road. And so, you know, just three examples of great community support for the district. I also would like to speak on behalf of the Teachers Guild. They wanted to take a moment to express their gratitude for Kenny Rotner's contribution as an integral ORCSD school board member. His humane voice and consistent compassion will be deeply missed. Several of us have served on district committees in collaboration with Kenny. He could be counted on to champion marginalized students and to ask difficult questions and only improve the outcome of our work together. Kenny was admired by many as a perpetually kind person who was willing to listen, integrate new perspectives and change his opinion after considering a new data. He modeled a healthy process for deliberating on weighty topics. It's difficult to fill the void left by someone like Kenny in our school district and community. We are grateful for all he did to support students, teachers and our community. Oyster River Teachers also wish to express our deepest condolences to Tracy, Kenny's wife and a longtime nurse in the district, and his daughter Emma as, as an Oyster River High School graduate. May knowing that others are thinking of you at this time, help you to provide comfort. So that was our teachers expressing the loss they feel with Kenny. The next piece on my report would be Revision Energy and, and they're going to talk to us about the solar array at the new middle school.
All right, good evening, everyone. I'm Ned Reynoldz with Revision Energy and I'm a resident of Portsmouth. And with me tonight is Dan Clapp, who is the head of our New Hampshire office and one of Revision's co-founders. He's a resident of Medbury, has several kids in the schools. I have a presentation here and I've connected, but, oh, there we go. Somebody did something. All right, terrific. Really pleased to be here tonight. Of course, we were, I was here last week, same time with the finance committee. And so this is sort of a reprise of that presentation, but I can go through a little quicker and at a more high level and get to questions and discussion. So we are very, Revision Energy is, you know, very pleased to be, have been asked to be your partner in this project, solar for the brand-new middle school. We got here by virtue of our record and relationship with, with both you and the town. Done five projects since 2012. And so we've been working with La Valley Brensinger over the last year on this project. And as I said, really pleased to be a part of it. It's a really progressive and far-sighted goal that you set to have a net zero school. That is to produce as much energy onsite. And of course, that'll all come from solar as the building will use in a year. Definitely going to put Oyster River School District, the middle school on the map as far as, in the state, certainly, in the region and probably nationally. So Revision Energy is a 17-year-old company. We are mission-driven to lead the transition to clean energy. We were founded back in, way back in 2003 and have since grown to have five offices throughout the region, 275 or so employee owners throughout those five offices. And we've completed over 9,000. I think we're approaching 10,000 clean energy systems of all kinds, mostly solar, but also complementary technologies like battery storage and air source heat pumps and electric vehicles and things like that. This is just a real high-level summary of our total amount of business and systems we've done throughout those 17 years. And I'm just going to flash through a few pictures for folks at home and folks here of, you know, the types of projects we've done in the region. Working on a few for the city of Nashua, Nashua Schools right now. We've done a ton of work up at Dartmouth, several projects for the city of Keene and over in that region. And of course, our currently, the sort of the crown jewel as far as school projects was completed, the ribbon cutting was just last year up in Dover. Huge solar array on the roof of that building, but doesn't come close to, you know, providing all the, all the energy that that huge school uses, but a significant chunk. But you guys will definitely be sort of setting the mark if you had zero or even, even close to net zero, you'd be, be the leader there. And of course, this is our project with the town and the gravel pit. And as I said, you guys are being very far-sighted and progressive for good reason. And it's the reason you've done solar in the past and people are doing more and more solar because rates have done nothing but go overall up and up over the last 30, 50 years while the cost of solar has come down and down. And this project has even benefited from that trend over the past year. And as we've been designing, as I'll mention in a moment, we were able to make an upgrade in the panel power because of this very phenomenon. So where we are with the present design, this is what it looks like, obviously, in a planned depiction, covering the roof and covering a bus port, adjacent bus port. I think that bus port's not quite to scale there, but get the idea. What we have would have a total of, you know, 1,450 panels that would generate almost 685,000 kilowatt-hours a year. And as I alluded to a moment ago, we were fairly recently in our design, we're able to upgrade, if you will, to a 440-watt panel from a, our sort of standard rooftop design. Before that had been with a 375-watt panel. So that was a significant jump and got us much, much closer to that net zero goal. And of course, all along the way, we've been talking about funding this solar, solar array in the same way that those projects for the town and the school district have been done in the past. And all those pictures that I showed you of other projects in the region through the power purchase agreement. And for anyone who's tuning in for the first time, this is the overview of what and why a power purchase agreement. It's a really low-risk way to get solar built, requires no upfront capital from the host of the solar array. Does deliver some immediate energy cost savings, modest savings, I can, can admit, but that's because you're not putting out any capital. But the reason to do it is because the significant savings are in the long term, especially if you exercise the buyout option. Three parties to the agreement, basically the host, you, Revision Energy, who would design and build the array, and somebody to provide the capital. And that person who provides the capital also, since they own the array, as long as they own it, they're assuming the risk of ensuring it, operating it, making sure it's, making sure it's delivering the power that it was supposed to. There is that buyout option, which first comes available at year six. It's not only in year six, but it becomes first available in year six. And, or the district or anyone always has the option to remain on the PPA for the long term, but the savings are not nearly as significant under that route. So not going to go through this slide, but this is just for the record, you know, sort of a more full overview of the various parties to the PPA and the PPA structure, how it So here's the sort of one-page or overview of the financials for the, the solar PPA project, the offer that we are making. I would like to point out that there's a slight difference in this, this overview. Then last week, we actually had sharpened our pencils a little bit and realized we were able to offer a PPA rate of 9.2 cents per kilowatt-hour. Last week, what I shared with the finance committee and everything I showed and distributed had a 9.4 cent kilowatt-hour, per kilowatt-hour rate. So it seems small, but it does, does add up. The savings are a little bit larger in the short term. As I mentioned, even in the, you know, the short term, it does deliver savings. In this case, not insignificant, over six, about $6,500 a year without having put out any capital. But the real long-term, the real savings that I said under a PPA are in the long term. This is the illustration of the difference between the district exercising the buyout in year six or staying on the PPA to term. And it's another way to look at it. The, sorry, the title of this slide seems to be missing, other than PPA. It's supposed to say leveledized cost of energy, 40-year leveledized cost of energy is what this, what these bars are showing you. So under the PPA, if you exercise the buyout, you essentially will have a renewable energy generation over a 40-year period. It's going to give you electricity at 4.7 cents. That compares to utility costs, even if you thought utility prices were not going to go up at all over the next 40 years, the leveledized cost would basically be 10 cents. So solar PPA delivers it for less than half of that. But of course, utility prices do escalate, as my earlier graph showed. That would be over 16 cents. So the solar is by far the lowest-cost provider of energy in the long term. And the reason we use that 40 years is because that's how long the arrays, the arrays expected to last. So if you're building a brand-new building and you'll have solar on it for a long, long time. Leave that one for the moment. I do have, I'm prepared to talk with you about the sort of bus port included or bus port not included, but I thought I'll stop right here and see if there's any questions with just what I've showed.
I mean, you're probably going to get to this, but you're going to talk about the buyout?
Yes. So let me go back to you right there.
So, so people in the finance committee have probably been through this, but it seems to me that if you can manage to do the buyout in year six, there's a tremendous advantage. It seems to me like, you know, you still have to, like about by, by the 14th year, you're starting to make money off of it. And so, and cumulatively, you're going to make a lot more money off it. It's, it's much more advantageous than staying on the PPA. Is that right?
That's exactly right. The reason for the PPA structure at all is again, you know, for people that aren't familiar or engaging for the first time, there are huge tax advantages available for the purchase of solar energy, solar equipment. But of course, as a nonprofit, as a governmental entity, you can't benefit from those directly. So that's why the PPA structure exists and that's why the buyout is six at year six because five years is the required holding period for the investor to hold the, hold the investment. Once he claims the tax benefits, got to hold it for five years. So essentially, by using the PPA structure, you're able to buy the array at year six at a discounted price. You are, you are benefiting from the tax advantages, but through indirectly through the investor. So yes, when you exercise the buyout, of course, the yellow line shows you, you have to make a capital investment. And then like any capital investment, there's a recovery, you know, payback period, if you will. It's about nine years in this case. And once you've paid off the array there, year 14, year 15, now you have a huge solar system that is just collecting free solar energy. You have a little bit of operation and maintenance costs, which is built into all of our savings projections, but you're just, you know, the, the fuel is free. So that's why the savings accumulate so rapidly.
So it's somewhat ironic because Monday night at the Durham Town Council, we were, the energy committee was giving a report. So it's, we're approaching year six of the gravel pit. And so their thought, they haven't come to us with their formal recommendation, but what they found actually really backs up exactly what you're saying is that it, that the buyout at year six is definitely advantageous and that the project has been a good project.
Well, I'll say that Sue provided me the, I think us, the finance committee, with the performance data on the array that's on the service building and from the first, I want to say, year and a half or so of, of performance data, it's exceeded the initial projections that Revision provided when it was installed by, I want to say like 6% or 8%. I don't have the number here, but.
And I'm just noticing some differences in the, I think the version of this that we were emailed earlier, and I'm not sure if they're even significant, but is this a more current version that we're looking at or is the one?
The one you're looking at?
The one you're looking at tonight is more current.
This bar chart is is more current.
Okay.
So this reflects the 9.2 percent, no, sorry, 9.2 cent PPA rate. That's the rate of electricity, that's the price of electricity that you'll pay. Where that's the presentation that you emailed is from last week's presentation where the PPA rate was 9.4. So I think the difference is very small in that bar chart.
Okay.
But it's a little bit lower. You know, the levelized cost of energy with the little bit lower PPA rate would be, you know, a little bit lower.
Okay. And I didn't have an opportunity to read through it thoroughly. I just noticed the differences. So could we get that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, that version is, is more accurate. Yeah.
Just one other quick question. My understanding, having looked at solar power in the past, is that panels efficiency depletes over time. Is there, you mentioned a new panel that you're now using, it generates more power. Is there any change in that sort of depletion of efficiency or is that sort of static?
You like, wow, you, in fact, thank you for asking that question. Yes, the answer is yes. And that, so that gives me the chance to tell you that the numbers that you're looking at tonight, which I just said are the updated numbers, are actually even a little bit better because we upgraded to the 440 watt panel. And its annual degradation rate is half the previous generation of all panels degradation rate. Historically, the, the annual degradation rate of panels has been a half a percent per year. This panel, which you're going to be having, the REC 450, 440 is what we've got, has a annual guarantee, and these are guaranteed, by the way, guaranteed annual maximum annual degradation rate is 0.25%. So the way that plays out is in the, you know, annual production kilowatt hours goes down, decreases slightly every year, but it decreases less. And I just noticed when I was sitting here during the earlier part of the meeting, that our finance folks in the financial model had, had not changed the degradation rate from a half a percent to 0.25. So that in fact, the numbers are going to be even better. A little bit better, not, doesn't make a huge difference, but it does make a difference. I did the math while I was sitting there. And I think over the 25-year period, if you exercise the buyout, 25 years, lower, lower degradation actually increases the savings by about $70,000.
Okay.
Over what, over what it would have been. It was a million dollars, now it's a million and something.
And would it be fair to assume that the lifespan of the panel would be a bit longer? Or is that also?
The, I haven't seen that, that the expected lifespan is 40 years. And that's what we still say, 40 years. I don't know. That's a good question. Does that lower degradation?
I'm honestly not sure what.
Probably other parts of the system.
Is it efficiency or is it just mechanical failure? But, okay.
Yeah, we show show 40-year lifespan, so.
This is a question maybe for Sue more than for you, but from, from the beginning, what we would see from ever source would be a credit because there will be net sales over the course of the year. We're paying, we'd be paying, under the PPA, we'd be paying revision for the, for the energy that comes out of the grid and then whatever we, or out of the array. Whatever we don't use, we sell the ever source.
Correct.
Does that show up as, is that something that the district would receive a check for or is our account structured in a way that that just goes to offset, you know, the high school or something else or?
Do you know that? Do you know the answer to that?
You can set it up either way. Either you can set it up and we get a monthly net, a monthly.
I'm going to have to ask.
No, buddy.
Thanks. I'm Dan, Madberry resident. I have two kids in the school program with soon to be a third. But yes, so the question regarding, you know, how it shows up on the bill, either you can choose to get, if there's a surplus, net surplus on a monthly basis, actually, this is a larger array, so it's instantaneous. But when you get that surplus, you can either choose to get a monetary credit on a monthly basis, or you can do virtual net metering and push it to another meter, metered account. So there's a choice of when we set that up, you can do so.
And my concern was along the lines of how does that look as a revenue stream, I guess? If, if, if we were getting a check from ever source, does that create other complications? But if it can be used to offset other money that we're going to have to pay ever source anyway, then, then that's not an issue.
Can I ask clarifying question? Dan, are you saying that we can use the excess energy produced at the middle school to offset, say, the high school electric bill?
You could, yes.
On, on a dollar basis, not on a?
On a monetary basis, not a kilowatt hour credit basis.
And just a clarifying question, the solar array that you're recommending brings us to our goal of net zero or really close to our goal of net zero? In terms of our initial goal for this building, the solar array will match, will create enough energy to offset the energy we're using, which is the definition we're using for net zero for this project?
Correct. And Ron's coming up to speak to that. But and that, that is an important point from this perspective is, you know, we could approach this from the most cost effective point of view and use a module that's less power dense and it costs less, which drives down the overall installation cost, which could slightly improve the PPA rate. But we have chose a module that's, has higher power density, given us higher generation to reach this net zero goal. And we're trying to balance that between some savings, keeping savings where they need to be for the district and, and reaching these net zero ambitions. So I'll, I'll just let Ron.
Hi, I'm Ron Lamar from La Valley Brenzing Architects. So as it stands right now, using the 440 watt panel, we would be producing 98.5% of all of the energy consumed by the building. So that's not just the electrical, but that's also the natural gas. We do have some bits of natural gas in the building. Two things we're doing right now, because we're so close, and when we talked about this earlier on in the process, it was our goal to be net zero ready. Because we're so close, we are looking back at the IT systems and the kitchen equipment. That's what we're down to in ways to drive the energy down because, you know, a net zero building is not so much that you just design a building and then throw a bunch of solar on top of it. We've spent incredible time with everybody designing the building to drive the energy consumption of the building down, which is why we're, where we're at. So we're taking a look at those two systems to see if we can drive that energy down any further. And at the same time, Revision has come back and said, by the time we go to implement this project, there could be another generation of panel, which is the 450. So that's an if, and then this is an if. But even if we decided tonight, let's do it, let's get it done, we know that we're at 98.5% of all of the energy for the building. Now, having said that, it also depends on how you operate the building. So in our model, we have shared with you all the assumptions that we've made and we've been conservative because we don't want to over promise and underperform. So we're assuming you're going to have use throughout the entire summer of the building on a, on a certain scale. We understand it probably won't be fully occupied, but partially occupied. We're also figuring nightly use. We're also figuring the concert hall that we have in there, right? So yes, you have a certain number of assemblies, if you will, in the recital hall at the gymnasium for the high school right now, but you'll probably be doing more than that, right? When you get this building built. So we've factored that in as well. And then it all comes down to, you know, how much more efficient the building is when it comes to usage. So we've done all the predictions, but I think right now, and I can tell you that I was very happily surprised that we're this close. Because throughout this entire process, we've been talking about the use of natural gas, right? For every therm of natural gas, or for every BTU of natural gas, it takes three BTUs of solar to replace that. It's not a one-to-one change or coverage, if you will. So I think it's a kudos to everybody who's worked on this project and all the decisions that the board has made throughout this entire process. Because I think as Ned said, just looking it up, we've got competitors, if you will, who've designed buildings and they're all driving towards net zero and nobody's achieved it. So you are pretty close to achieving it. I think you shared that Dover is 60%?
A little north of 50.
Yeah, a little north of 50.
A little north of 50, okay. So, you know, when they talk about the Dover High School flagship, you know, the size of that array, they're providing just over 50% of the energy usage in that building. And you'll be at 98.5, unless we're able to drive it down a little bit more and raise up the panel, in which case you'll be 100%, which is, you know, quite an achievement. And I think when we had all of our community meetings, that was one big question from the community was, you know, can we do it? Is it possible? And I think what Ned showed tonight in his presentation is that, you know, the life of solar has changed, right? The prices are coming down, the energy performance is going up. So I think you're hitting it at the sweet spot in order to achieve this.
It would seem to me that an assumption to be able to do this, we would have to spend money to build the platform for the array above the car, or the port, right?
Right.
And that's what about 300?
352,000.
Come on up, Andre.
It's 352,000.
Maybe you should flip back to the overview drawing so that, because I don't know if everybody
Sure, could do.
But is aware of that aspect of it.
So, so 352,000, would that need to be in the budget for this year?
It depends on the choices the school board makes, Tom. It could be in the proposed budget. There's a bunch of options that finance, the finance committee just started briefly talking about that will come back around and talk about some more.
Okay.
So yes, and maybe. But it has, we have to figure out how to pay for it locally is the bottom line. And how we do that is really still under consideration. And then a recommendation to the full board from finance.
But it would seem to me just, it makes sense to go forward with it, not to do part and then assume that a year or two down the road, we can do it. I mean, it makes sense to go, to go for it, right?
So just to back up a step, what we're talking about here. Does everybody understand what we're talking about here? Because I know we talked about it last week at Finance, but.
I'm assuming you're talking about the bus port.
Right. So you see two sections on this, on this view. There's the big rectangular section that's the building. And then there's the one that's sticking up towards the top, that's the canopy over the driveway slash bus area. The building, we're building, right? Andre's building the building. That's going to be a place to put, put solar panels. But the bus canopy is not part of the plan right now. So that's where the additional investment of 352, 352,000 would be required to provide the structure.
So the only thing I'll add, yeah, I was, sorry, I was slightly distracted. But it's like, it's 55% of the whole project is coming from the bus port. And I, I think the question that we had on the finance committee really was, and this is an Andre question, was it next summer? I'll let you like wander. So when would you be ready to put the solar panels on the roof of the middle school?
So we're projecting that midsummer next year, we will be all set to have them installed. And what's been explained to us as well is that ideally for the, from the perspective of the investors involved in the project, they, they kind of expect the additional panels to be installed subsequent to the installation of the ones on the school roof. So that, and from, our, our pricing is also based on being able to do it while we're constructing the school. So it gets a little bit more complicated to try to do it in two years because there's, there'll be a lot going on over that summer, demoing the old school and then building the sports field. So it would be ideal if, if we could move directly into that construction of the canopy and have it ready for revision to install, you know, later in the summer of 2021.
So you, I mean, again, I'm coming to that, it's like, so you'll probably either later in the summer or beginning of the fall, be ready to build the bus port. And this is actually a revision thing. We were talking about this, it doesn't make a lot of sense to me to partially build a solar system. It really makes sense to integrate the solar system under the construction. And so in my mind, you know, the two years doesn't make any sense to me, not on a $49 million project. We need to really put the money into the fiscal 21, 22 budget so that when the opportune time for the construction is, that you actually do it. So to me, once we went down the road that one of the pillars of the building was net zero, we're going to use solar, we really agreed to this cost. And so I think for me, a priority, and we'll get to the budget goal later, you guys will get to go, but this really needs to be built into the fiscal 21, 22 budget. It's a priority that move, and we've done that before where we've kind of shuffled the five-year CIP. But for the CIP for 21, 22, this goes to the top. So if it means that we have to scratch something else off to come under the budget goal, this comes first in my mind.
So I know that there's extra money in the middle school budget, the contingency fund, as you will. If, can we use any savings from that to build this bus port? If there's money left in that, can we use it that way?
So Denise, we won't know what's left in the contingency in this project until we tear down the old school, which is the following summer. Our biggest concern in the old school is what we don't see. So if there's asbestos, for example, as they tear down that building, Andre's going to have to stop and do asbestos abatement, which will add to the cost. So our biggest concern right now is to hang on to as much of the contingency as we possibly can until that building is down.
Can I just jump on that too? It's like, if you look at our reserve funds that we've built up, one of our reserve funds is Facility Development Capital Improvement Reserve, which has $275,000 and in it. And so as we begin to look at how we were going to pay for it and we begin to look at, again, offsetting revenue and, and funds, it would seem very obvious to me that we would use that specifically for the solar array.
So you just mentioned the, the critical nature of the timing, the advantages to doing the installation at a certain point in the construction. Just thinking back to this summer, we had, we found some delays in getting laptops that had been ordered. COVID pandemic has affected economies and supply chains. What, what impacts have you seen to your supply chains and what do you see, you know, in the, in the time that would, that we would need to get the, the panels, so to speak, and all the other materials?
Well, from, from a steel point of view, we would, we'd, we would have plenty of time to get the steel ordered, manufactured and, and ready for us. I'm not an expert on solar panel availability, so I'm sure that could be addressed by Dan.
Yeah, that is always a concern, but we work hard to minimize that. And we do a few, we do that in a few ways. One is we're part of a cooperative group across the US. So we order, when we order, we order in bulk. And we place our orders with our vendors a year in advance. We give them, we don't place all of them, but we give them an idea of what we're actually ordering and commit to a certain level. And that secures modules for us in the following year. We have some really good relationships with our module manufacturers that we talk to directly to minimize any of that potential impact.
And because there's a new panel that we would be using if we do it, is the production of that new version of the panel sort of equivalent to what you're used to having? Or maybe there hasn't been enough time to evaluate that, but.
I mean, that panel will start showing up end of Q4, late this year into 2021. That 440 watt. But just, we'll bring you, yeah, just before we, one important point we want to make or slide to go over is during last week's presentation, the financial, the financial slide to go over is during last week's presentation, the financial, the financial committee asked whether this bus port can be thrown into the power purchase agreement. And the question really is whether the bus port is basis eligible and can be taken in the investment tax credit that we're basing all of these financials on, which is a 26%. And before I even get into that, the key to that is this project needs to be safe harbored this year in order to protect that 26% investment tax credit. So what that means is a contract needs to be signed and we need to order panels and put in at least 10% of the overall system costs. We need to issue that by the end of the calendar year and we need to take, we need to store these modules and take delivery of them by April 15th, the following year, per the safe harbor requirement. So that is, put a little bit of time crunch on, on this. In addition, the question was asked, can we include the bus port into the PPA? And it really, we are not tax professionals, so we do need a tax opinion on that, but we, after further deliberation, we do feel relatively confident that we can. And so there could, we could throw that in, that, that results in slightly higher PPA rate and obviously a higher buyout, but there is some tax advantages there. We're not going to commit to it, but we're feeling comfortable about it. So we could move along in that direction, do our due diligence. And the key is the investor who takes this project needs to agree to that tax opinion and that it is basis eligible. If we can get them to agree, obviously we would have to hire some outside tax advisors, professionals, then there's a chance that we can include this into the PPA, the bus port infrastructure.
And that, that's a big deal for a couple of reasons. The 26% investment tax credit is almost $100,000 out of that, which will, you know, most of that, a lot of that trickle down to the district eventually. And we don't have to come up with the $352,000 in the fiscal year '22 budget. We pay a little bit more in the electric rate over the first five years and a little bit more when we potentially buy the system out after five, but that's a, I mean, I think that's a big deal if that's really a possibility.
So in terms of, sorry, go ahead.
So I was going to say, following on that, we, what we did was work up some scenarios for, there's basically four scenarios and I'll flip to the table in a moment to show you. But before I do that, last week it was discussed, you know, that you, you had, the finance committee had a discussion like this and it was mentioned, well, that you're expecting 150,000 in utility rebates, so perhaps that could be some of the revenue put toward the 350 cost of the bus port. So we used that in our scenarios, but let me, let me go to that slide now and it's probably going to look a little busy, but there it is to start out. So first, the top row, of course, is the situation, you know, I called it as-is, as we just showed you, 9.2 cent PPA rate. The array has a capital cost upfront of something like 1.1 million. The buyout price, the six-year, but year six buyout price in that scenario is, as you see, 628, 628,000. That's the one that gives you 6,500 a year average savings over the first five years and, you know, over a million savings, almost 1.1 million over 25 years. So then down below, I used two scenarios. One where you, the bottom row is where you put the full 352,000 capital cost of the bus port in the PPA. And the second scenario or the second, you know, possibility is you put that 150 down toward the, toward the capital cost and you only put 202,000 in the PPA. And then of course, is it tax, you know, is, is the bus port tax, solar tax credit eligible or not? If it is, that's the green columns. If it's not, that's the red columns. But as Dan said, we're, you know, reasonably, we wouldn't, we wouldn't offer it if we weren't somewhat, you know, I always qualify it reasonably confident that we can get a favorable, that, you know, that it's a, it's a reasonable thing to declare the, the bus port structure basis eligible. And, you know, if you were to say, put the 150 down and we put 202 in the, into the PPA, the investor funds that basically, but it, but it's basis eligible, you know, the PPA rate would be 10 cents. It's got a higher buyout cost, but, so basically these are different, you know, ways you could finance the, the bus port. But the 10 cent PPA rate actually still has short-term savings, five-year, you know, years one through five savings and.
I'm sorry, what is the difference in the buyout?
So if you're, you know, adding several hundred thousand dollars of pure capital cost into the, you know, the, the project that the investor is funding, it, it affects both the PPA rate he's able to offer and it affects the, the year six buyout price that he's able to offer.
Okay.
So that's the variation.
Maybe I'm just not seeing the number, but you, you gave a number of 600, was it 650, something?
Right. Well, the, the, the pure PPA, I'll call it, the, the option that I talked about much earlier, earlier, 9.2 cents, that no bus port funding in there at all, the buyout price for just the solar array would be 628,000. If you roll, if you put a big capital cost for the bus port into the PPA, then the, the buyout prices are going to be higher and those are shown.
I'm just trying to see how much higher, I mean, I'm 782, 668.
The default is 628, the top of the blue.
Got it, okay.
And then down to 782, right? That's the.
Okay. And then you lose the five-year savings, goes from 32,000 to 4,845, right?
Definitely takes time to absorb all these figures, but you basically see if you, if you put either 202,000 or 352,000 of pure cost, no, there's no revenue generation from the, from the structure, right? It's all coming from the solar. So if you put those huge capital costs into this, into the PPA, then the buyout price is going to increase, you know, either, you know, as Dan just said, 154,000 if it was 202 additional capital or if it was additional 350 capital, you know, the buyout price would go up by about 300,000, you can see.
So if we wanted to lower the cost of the buyout to keep it at the 628, our best option would be, as Al said, right, to put it in the, in the budget? Am I getting that right?
Well, I mean, again, when I, I said, put it in the, the putting it in the budget is like the, it's the guarantee. There's no legal options or anything needs to be done. It's, it's a given. Everything else becomes a little bit more murky as we move through it.
Yeah, I think Dan wants to say something about how we could, you don't necessarily have to decide tonight. We are willing to structure a PPA contract that basically gives us time to get that, you know, determination about basis eligibility.
Yeah, in order to safe harbor, we need to sign contract, but what we can do, since this is still up in the air, we can put a clause in that contract that gives the seller, us, the investor, the right to change the PPA rate based on what the finding, tax findings are, but it'll also give the buyer, you, the ability to back, back out if it was not favorable. So it gives us some flexibility, but it allows us to move forward until we have the investor aligned with the project and we are 100% on this, on this tax basis, eligible basis question.
Dan, in relation to the tax finding, one way or the other, what kind of timeline do you anticipate before you would know for sure?
Yeah, it's a good question. So, you know, we're shooting to have a signed PPA contract in October and I would like to think, hopefully by the end of the year, we'd have our investor lined up and have that tax, that written tax opinion.
So the alignment would be, we're developing the '21, '22 budget during the same time period and largely the school board will have the budget done just before Christmas or right after the new year. That's generally when it concludes its work. So the timing of that legal opinion within that framework of November, December would influence ultimately what the board finally approves for the '21, '22 school budget.
So yeah, we would have to work in alignment there. Sorry, we're on the same page.
So I'm just trying to figure out like what happens in our next meeting, like what comes, will you come to us with options? Will you come to us with an advice contract? Will you go to the finance committee and the finance committee will recommend an approach? How, how are we going to go forward?
Well, we have a finance committee set for the 30th and Dan, can you have a draft of the contract for the finance committee review?
We could.
For the 30th?
Yes, we could.
So I would send it back to finance for finance committee review of the contract and then for them to send it to the full committee for your consideration in the first meeting in October.
Because this is time sensitive because of the tax situation, right?
Right.
So, so we would need to make a decision on the next meeting, is that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I make a, oh, I'm sorry.
Well, just, I'm just to clarify, because our next meeting is October 7th.
Correct.
So, but it says the contract has to be signed by October 7th. So is, as long as we're approving it by October 7th, that would be okay? I mean, I'm just.
That would be okay, yes.
That would be okay, all right.
So can I make a suggestion along what Jim was saying is that, so you've thrown out the three options, which is we put either the 352,000 dollars down. Let us at the next finance committee look at those three options and say what we think is the best option going forward. And then we'll be ready then by October 7th, if everyone agrees to then sign the contract.
To choose an option, yep. And we'd put that in the contract.
Yep.
But as Dan said, that contract would have the, the opt-out clauses. So your, your fallback could be, you know, say that the tax determination came back in November, it's unfavorable. Okay, well, none of those unfavorable ones look that great. Our fallback is find another way to finance the bus port.
Yep.
Yeah, because I'll just, yeah, because I mean, it, to me, it's, it's considerable difference. I mean, I certainly hear if it's tax favorable, how it could be a real positive thing. I'm not so sure about if the tax comes out unfavorably that it's kind of worth, worth it, I guess.
If it comes back unfavorable, Denise, then the finance committee will be looking at the, the original proposal.
Right.
And then coming through their discussion, how they want to approach it and recommend to the full board how, how they would go forward funding it.
Right, exactly, yep.
So I have one question that's not directly related to this and then I want to share some thoughts about my thought process, but before we go off of this, is there anybody else that, all right. So this is a, this is a how does it work question. When, the ideal situation is work, the building is consuming the energy as it's produced in the, you know, from the, from the panels. That's the, that's where it produces the most value.
Real-time, yep, real-time use, energy's used behind the meter, highest value.
We are committing in the PPA to buying everything that comes out of the array at the 9.2 or 10 or 12.2.
Correct.
When we're not using it all, we're selling it to ever source. And the rate there is, is what?
Correct.
It's whatever, so we're.
It's 8.3.
So the district takes the, takes the, the difference, either the, the gain or the loss there.
Right.
Okay, okay. So, so here's my thought process on this. I know that we have said from the beginning, we want this to be a net zero energy building and I think that's probably what we still want. I want to make sure we're going into that decision with our eyes open and understanding what the cost impact of that is. So we're in a weird time right now for lots of reasons. And one of the things that's really weird is that the cost of electricity from ever source is at least a two-year low and maybe a longer low than that. So right now, on the service building, we're actually losing about 3 cents a kilowatt hour for every, every kilowatt hour that gets produced on the, on the panel there and gets pushed back to ever source. We're losing that money. The district is losing that money because we don't get as much from ever source as it costs us to buy that, buy that energy. We might have the same situation going on here with the middle school as well, depending on what your crystal ball says for the price of energy in the future. So, so I just want to, I'm trying to think through that based on all the information that's been provided. And when we talk about this again at finance in, in two weeks and here on October 7th to understand that it's, it's that difference plus the construction cost of the bus canopy plus the 352,000, however that ends up being financed, that we're going to have to pay more than we would pay otherwise to get to the net zero building. So in the short term, granted, you know, if we're looking at the long term, yes, the yellow line, right? But, but in the short term, for the first five to 10 years, we're talking about something that's.
So I think that also with that, I mean, it's going to cause a, when you do the middle school at a net zero, particularly when we move towards the summer months, when you looked at like how much energy we're really using, I think it's going to cause a shift in how, where we have programs used.
Absolutely.
So what you're going to, to your point, it's going to mean like in the summer, would we use the high school or would we go use the middle school where it's most advantageous?
And it's going to be more comfortable inside because.
So I think, I think in that respect, it's going to cause a cultural shift where we begin to maximize the use of the middle school and get the most behind the meter use of the building we can and minimize the stuff we're paying from ever.
And there's a lot of room for that, but based on, so Ron, Ron sent us a new roll-up of the energy model for the middle school today. I didn't have a ton of time to work with that, but it looks to me like based on that in July, we may be producing three times as much energy as the building's using, electricity as the building's using. And that's the, that's the, obviously the middle of summer when we're using the least and it's producing the most, but yeah, that's.
So right now, we're using elementary schools and high schools and the middle school for summer programming and Al's right on. I would, I would recommend bringing all that programming to the middle school because you have a climate-controlled building and be far more comfortable. And we're utilizing this building to its potential.
Yeah.
So we're going to, so you're going to have a meeting of the finance committee, you're going to come with a recommendation?
On the 7th.
On the 7th, all right?
Yep.
Okay, I think that's it, right? Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Well, can I just, I'm sorry, because I, I thought there were more slides. I'm just, because I, when I looked through the whole presentation and there was this turnkey purchase and I just, real briefly, I was trying to understand what that was.
So we presented that option last week to the finance committee because we were asked to, to, you know, what, what does it look like if, you know, we were to buy it outright, turnkey purchase?
Oh, you mean purchase the solar arrays outright?
Right.
Oh, okay.
Right.
Okay. Got it. And so they decided that wasn't, okay.
Sadly, they didn't discover any like jewels or gold.
Got it, it was just, yeah.
There is a reason why other places.
I looked at the presentation and I was just trying to sort out where that fit in. Okay, thank you.
It's an option, but not really a good one because of those tax advantages.
Yep.
Thank you.
All right.
So it's about 8:49 and the number of the candidates have been here right from the beginning. I'm wondering if people would entertain the option of moving to the selection of the candidate for the, the board and then, and then take a break after that because I don't think it's about to nine o'clock.
You don't want to give them the full experience?
I just didn't know what it's really like. It's like.
I mean, it's been so exciting so far.
I still might get second thoughts on it, I don't know.
They're still with us.
No, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Is everybody okay with moving that up?
Yeah, I'm fine with that.
Okay, I was going to summarize the candidates' backgrounds, but they've pretty much done that themselves except for, is it Gianna Gelsy? Was she here? I don't, I, sometimes I heard the names, I didn't think she spoke.
I don't think she did.
Okay. Just to remind you of her background, one of the several candidates with a very strong science background. science background, background in science, it looked to me like evolutionary biology, paleontology, etymology, has extensive experience with science education at all levels, has served as the chair of the Moharmit PTO and the Board of Directors of Parents and Preschoolers and the School Board's Long Range Planning Committee, so extensive work with the schools. Just as a clarification about what we're approving, we're approving someone who will take the, Kenny Rotner's position to the end of this year, that'll be to the March vote. That person could decide then to put their self in candidacy, you know, if they want to run for the last year of Kenny's appointment. So Kenny's appointment will finish in, what, 2022? So if somebody decides they would want to run for the second, the third year of Kenny's position, they would put their name in in January and run next March. What I thought we would do is open it up to, anybody wants to make a comment about the candidates, about strengths, if they have information that they want to share that's not part of the letters and vetas that we've seen. And then once that's, once we've done with that, we will proceed, there's a voting sheet in your folder, and we'll proceed to vote as we've done in the past with the continued voting. Everybody would have a vote. If somebody has a majority the first round, that's settled. If not, you eliminate the zeros and the lowest number and go for second votes. We've done that before. So I would just like to say how impressive all eight of the candidates are, how difficult it is to select one out of it. But it almost struck me that the leadership of the community, of the school system is coming forward. Some leaders have come forward and they will have, play a role whether they're selected for this or not. And it was really, it's gratifying to see so many outstanding people come forward. So I don't know if people would like to comment on the candidates, if they have information.
So I agree, I think it's, it's great to have the interest that we have in this right now. It's been a long time since there was this much interest in joining the school board. And it's also, I, yes, there's, the qualifications are outstanding and it's a tough decision, but it's also a good decision. We've had so many things we've had to vote on recently that are choosing between things that are obviously not ideal. And so it's really nice to have the opportunity to, to vote on something positively. I think, I think you're right, there's a, you know, there's a huge demonstration of community involvement in lots of different ways amongst this group, in the, in the school system in particular, and in, in community work with the towns and nonprofits as well. And I really appreciate the willingness to serve.
Brian?
Like Michael said, great background and everybody here, but I would ask from the board, it was my thought, you obviously are going to decide what you want, but one thing that has kind of always been an issue with me since I've been here is the representation from Lee. I'm the only person from Lee, I've been since day one, I've been the only person from Lee on this board. And with that comes the representation of the Masteway School. I think the Mastway has been underrepresented as well. So I'd like to see, at least, not that there's any bad candidates out there, I think they're all great, but I'd like to see somebody from Lee who has the time to come in and work on some committees and do, I mean, as much as we all love Kenny, we can't clone Kenny, you know? We got to have, you know, someone that can fill that spot. And I really would urge you to at least consider somebody from the town of Lee, not only to represent the Mastway School, but to represent the town of Lee. Because we have two people from Madbury, we have, we have four people from Durham. You know, if we could spread it out a little bit, I think it would be advantageous to the board. I think it would give us a broader view of what's going on because we have a great, you know, two great people from Madbury that are on top of what's going on in the town. I think someone that can take some of the weight off of me of socializing in Lee and getting out there to find out what's going on. But I would ask that, not only would look at that, but look at somebody who has the time to put aside to some of the, some of the stuff we do is time-consuming. And it's not just these meetings every, you know, twice a month, there's other committees and it's other stuff we do. I thoroughly enjoy it, you know, but I'm kind of a nerd, so, you know, it works for me. But, but I'd just ask that of the board, if you, take that into consideration, please, in your, in your, in your thoughts.
So ironically enough, I was thinking the exact same thing. I, I mean, I sometimes feel like Durham is overrepresented here. Maybe I'm the worst because I'm doing the dual role of Durham Town Councilor and school board member at the same time. But I, when I look, there, and by the way, the candidates are phenomenal. I, I can't say how impressed I am, it's been a really long time since I first threw my name in the hat of the school board, and it was a pretty turbulent time to dive in. And now it's probably even harder than that, so thank you, it's impressive. But I, but I agree with, with what, what Brian is saying, I think that we, you know, that there needs to be more representation of Lee to balance the board out a little bit. We're heavy Durham-centric, and I think there needs to be another representative from Lee. Denise?
I'm going to echo what everyone else has said about how impressed I am with the candidates. I would be thrilled to have any of these individuals join our board. Very difficult to choose one for sure. I know, I've worked with some of these individuals on, on different committees and Go Vote and so on and so forth, and boy, it's really difficult to choose one. I appreciate what you folks are saying as far as representation from Lee. I think that is an important consideration. But I'm also looking at, in terms of what our, thinking about our strategic plan and what some things are in the strategic plan and the skill set that these different individuals bring in relation to that. And for me, when I was thinking about all of these individuals, that's kind of what tilted me a little bit more to UC because of her background, working with, in, first of all, her doctorate in social innovation and working with groups in terms of social justice and diversity, which is definitely part of our strategic plan. It's one of the things that we are trying to focus more on. So I would ask folks to maybe consider her candidacy, and again, not meant to in any way take away from any of these candidates. Again, I could totally support any of them, but for me, that's kind of what tilted it a little bit more towards UC.
Yeah.
So excellent thoughts. And again, I think, you know, if we were to get at one of those ping pong ball machines and just pick someone randomly, we'd, we'd be in a pretty good spot. With that said, your point, Brian, is an excellent one, and Lee is the second most populous town in the district. Another consideration I'd like us to keep in mind, when I first joined the board, there were three women serving on the board. And Denise has been the only female representative on the board for some time now. And ethnic diversity is also something we've talked quite a bit about, you know, going back to some issues that the district has gone through, learned from. And so I think those two factors also lend, lead me, in addition to what Denise just said about the strategic planning, the history of involvement. So for those reasons, despite the fact that she doesn't live in Lee, UC has emerged in my mind as, as a leading candidate. But, you know, the, as a board, I think we need to just find out, you know, figure out that path. And I think if, if she doesn't end up being the choice, whoever we end up with will, will serve the community well.
Yes, I'm, I'm going to speak in favor of Matt Bacon. I've known Matt for a number of years and seen his work in a number of different ways in the community. I think at this point in time, the temperament that Matt would bring, his experience with crisis management and his service with the guard and management of organizations that way would be an asset to the board. He's deeply involved in both the school and the town community, and I think he'd be a fantastic member.
And I would, if we're picking out people we, we've enjoyed to work with, I mean, I would say Deb Harmon from Lee. Number one, she's from Lee. Number two, she's been involved in more PTOs, Cub Scouts, the Go Vote Committee where she was out setting up parties to support this, this district. She's been extremely supportive of this district and of decisions of this board, you know, good, bad, or indifferent, because we all know the decisions are tough. You know, I think, you know, going to temperament, she, she has, her ways of dealing with people are excellent in the fact that she can take on some, something or somebody that's tough and deal with it in a professional manner that I think we expect of each other here at the board. Because it is, we all know it's not, we can get courted in Duncan Donuts pretty easily and get questioned, get called to the carpet and stuff. And I think being able to handle that is a, is a huge skill, which I think a lot of these people could do, but I know personally that Deb, Deb can. I've seen her do it, and watching her work with so many different personalities on the middle school committee was really great to watch and see the support and the excitement that went along to, to doing something for a school that her kids will never spend time in. And that kind of really pulled some weight with me because if there's literally no benefit you're going to get from it, but yet you still support it with all your heart and soul, you know, that, that goes a long way. So I would say that.
And I was on that committee with her, and, you know, something would come up and, you know, like a good idea, but the question is who's going to do it? And there's often that silence, you know? And she would, she would step up. She would step up. She did, she did that consistently. UC, you know, fantastic record of working in education in such a profound way and such a great voice for foreign language and so many other issues as she's come for us. I mean, it's a very, very difficult choice.
So I mean, I'll throw my, so I, you know, in addition to wanting somebody from Lee, just from the representative, representation, I also agreed with what Dan was saying. I think that there's, it would be gender-wise, it'd be great to have some diversity that came in here, that's not just all old guys, well, I'm old, I'm speaking myself. But, and then the third thing I really wanted is somebody to bring the elementary perspective here. I think that, as I look around the table, I think, Michael, you may be the only one who has an elementary student, and it's like we're shifted towards the older part of the spectrum. And so as I, I tried to fashion what I thought the criteria I was looking for as I looked through the candidates. And as, as I did, and I, I read, I've read these a lot of times, full disclosure, Matt, actually, his wife works with my wife at the hospital on simulation training and got a very, very high recommendation. But as I read through, I think for about the third or fourth time, through everybody's cover letters, the one that really stuck, struck me was Jessica Lewis. She met all of my criteria, has a strong science background, which I think will come in extraordinarily handy as we try to manipulate through the COVID thing. And so I think that's the one that really kind of rose to the top for me.
How do you, do you want show of hands, or how do you want to do this?
How do you want to do it, yeah?
We'll go down through the list, and if you, you have one vote, so you vote for the person, and then we eliminate anybody who's zero or, or the lowest, the lowest number. So, Matt Bacon? Gianna Gelsi, is it Gelsi?
Yes.
Gianna Gelsi?
Well, I'll just say, I've worked with, for Go Vote, and absolutely, I mean, I think she would do a fine job on the board. So again, I'm not taking away anything from anyone, I, you know, I just lean towards another person. But so, but I definitely want to just say, you know, she, I have no doubt that she would do an excellent job serving the board.
Deborah Harmon?
Oh, come on, Dan.
Brendan Jorgensen? Jessica Lewis? Heather Smith?
I'll also say, it would be awesome to have another engineer on the board. You can never have too many of us.
I think we have to limit that.
Rebecca Throop? UC Terrell? Okay, if you eliminate the zero and all, and the ones, that means we'd have to make a decision between Deborah Harmon and UC Terrell. Okay?
I think we should probably just eliminate the zeros the first time.
Yours? Say it again?
Just the zeros.
I think we should, if we're doing it one at a time, I think we should just, just.
Okay.
Yeah.
I don't think that'll change too much from the.
Well, I, well, I guess I, I.
Just like ranked second choice?
Ranked choice voting sometimes does change from just picking the, the top two to go from, not that I'm expecting that to necessarily happen in this case, but I also, you know, I think that we may.
This is what it's like when they choose the Pope, something like this. When they choose the Pope, I think that's the same.
To get the white smoke ready.
Same thing.
Okay. I think that if the second vote is exactly the same as the first vote, then you need to eliminate the ones.
Yeah, yeah, I think that's reasonable.
Okay. Vote two, Matt Bacon? And UC Terrell?
Oh, man.
So that was like 3-3, is that, is that where we are?
Seriously?
This is why we need the seventh.
Does anyone have a coin?
Well, you could do it that way.
This is probably why you need the seventh member. Do we want to talk about these two and then vote, or do you want to move forward to vote it one more time?
I guess. I think that there's, there's a, this is a difficult decision, and I think that there are no bad outcomes at this point, or weren't at the beginning either. And I do lean towards the side of, I think, you know, some of the, the programmatic involvement and strategic planning and organizational rethinking that UC would bring.
I would still, I'd be happy with, with Deb again, I'm really strongly for some Lee representation. And I just hate to be the only one from Lee representing a good portion of our, our tax-paying base. But I think, you know, both UC and Deb are great, but again, I'd like to see some Lee representation. I just, my vote's not going to change, but.
I'm, well, Deb meets two of my three, but it's like, and she has had a really strong involvement in just about everything that I can think of. And so I think, to Brian's point, I really do want to see somebody from Lee. I think it's, I think it balances the board out to have that, and I think that's really important.
I think if we would vote, like I, I thought this might happen, six votes. I think that if we vote a third time and it's these two, what I would propose is that we consider these two finalists and take another step and do interviews.
Yes.
Interviews with them, and almost like consider this, picking two finalists, not just to continue to vote. So I don't know how people feel about that.
I, I think I would like to suggest that.
Yeah.
I think that would be helpful perhaps, to kind of, you know, maybe do a little bit more of a, a question and answer, interview type of situation.
I mean, we're still going to do one more vote?
I'll do one more vote then, then. So, we still, Deb, Deb Harmon? Yuzi Terrell? Okay, so what I would like to propose is that we consider these two finalists, that any, if there, any interviewing has to be done in public, so we have to set up some, I don't know if it's a workshop or meeting, but you have to set up some public event to do the interviewing. And then we, between now and I would think the next meeting, right? And, and then we would, I would guess we'd have to vote again in another meeting.
Right, I, I think we could then, at that point, vote at the next meeting.
Okay.
Between the two.
Okay.
Can nothing ever be easy.
We do have the advantage of September, working in our favor, to add an extra meeting. Grown, I saw that, Michael. The 23rd is a possibility.
I can't do the 23rd.
Is that what I was going to say? Is that a Wednesday? I need to bring my calendar.
Next Wednesday.
I could do a different, I couldn't do it this time.
So, the following Wednesday is the Finance Committee. We could do it before the Finance or after the Finance.
Finance meets at?
5:30.
We could meet, can you, what time can you get here for the Finance?
Oh, I can get here by five.
What about you, Michael?
I could do 5:30. I can't do five.
I'm, I'm flexible since the three of us and Jim are going to be here no matter what.
Do we want to meet from Finance from 5:30 to 7:00 and?
Now, what, I'm sorry, what's the date?
We're talking about the 30th.
30th?
Oh, 30th, okay.
Does that work for you, Dan, Denise, Brian?
I believe that should be okay.
What time? So, do you want to do it like seven, have the interview thing, and then we'll do Finance before?
Yeah, we do, we do Finance from 5:30 to 7:00, because we have the revision piece to go through, but also we'll give you the first presentation on the two and a half, three, and three and a half. And then, you know, have a firm seven o'clock ending and pick up from there. We're set up, we'll be, all we need to do is have Denise and Dan and Tom come in and we're ready to go.
And we just, we have to make sure that our two finalists are available on that day. Because that will kind of important to make sure that our finalists could be here on the 30th.
Yuzi and Deb, would you be able to make a meeting?
I can't hear that.
The 30th. 30th at seven o'clock.
Wednesday, 30th.
Can you, Yuzi, you okay for that?
Yes.
Okay. So, we'll probably, I don't know, would, like a half hour with each candidate with?
I don't think we need that, probably not a half hour. Sounds like a lot of time, but maybe, yeah.
But I mean, if it stops, we'll, we'll take.
That's only, we can budget half an hour.
Okay.
Yeah. It'll go fast.
Okay.
Yeah. Well, I appreciate, again, all the candidates who put their names forward. Sorry we couldn't make a decision, but I think this is probably a good call to, to spend some time interviewing the two finalists.
And I have one other thing.
Denise, yeah?
And I just hope that all the candidates will definitely continue to be involved in our district. We can totally use you. You know, for, we're going to have at, at some point, you know, as has been mentioned, Superintendent Search Committee. Right now, we're looking for a chair for Long Range Planning Committee. I'll put a plug in there, which, by the way, that's the committee that I served with Jana on. I kind of messed things up a little, but please stay involved in our district. We can definitely use you.
So, thank you all. Yeah, I mean, the only thing I would say, too, is like, just as a side, is that you probably learned watching this, something about the nature of this board, which is, it is a pretty deliberative and conservative group. We are not really known for making spot decisions. We tend to try to grind our way throughout and come out with the best outcome, and I think this is kind of representative of that.
I think it's, what, 9:15. I'd like to take a five-minute break now and come back. Is that all right?
Yeah, good.
Okay. Figure out how to get to. Andy and Bill Sullivan have patiently been waiting, so we have an update on the middle school and high school sports. So, sorry you've had to wait so long. It's, that had a night.
Good evening. I will be brief, and I know Bill will as well. You guys got a lot on your agenda left to go, so. Sports, at the high school, up and running. We're on day eight now. We started on the, started on the eighth, so we are on day eight. Things are going really well. We were able to come up with a schedule that kept us within the southeast region with teams like Winnetka and Exeter and Dover and Spalding, teams we don't traditionally play, but generally, but we're not in traditional times. And so, we're, we're real happy with that schedule. I think I'm really proud of our kids and our coaches. They have really adapted and bought into doing what we've asked them to do. They've been really diligent with, you know, they're, they're walking in every day, getting their temperature taken, answering the same five or six questions every single day and doing so with a smile. So, I think, you know, as an athletic community as a whole, I'm really, really pleased. We've thrown a lot at our athletes, our coaches, our parents. We've thrown a lot of protocols and guidelines and rules and, and everything at them, and they've really responded. So, things are going well. Things are going really well, and we're excited. We've had a couple golf matches, and this weekend, we really kick, kick everything off. We have a cross-country race at DeMarit, so if you want to come pick some apples and watch some cross-country, come on out. We got some soccer games and field hockey games and volleyball kicking off. So, it's been, it's been a great start, and I, and we hopefully will continue.
Andy, before you leave, just in terms of, this seems premature, but the season is so short.
Yes.
Can you talk to us about the end of the season?
Sure. Yeah, so, you know, one of the things that, you know, that I had put in the, the original proposal to you guys is, you know, should we go forward, that we would hopefully be able to, that we would be, we would be eligible from the NHIAA standpoint, tournament-eligible, and we're hoping that the, you know, the school board will, will see that as well. The open tournament at the end of the year, it becomes divisionable, divisionable? Divisional. Divisional at that point, which would mean that we would be going up against our traditional division-two opponents. What the NHIAA is trying to do is trying to create round-one matchups where you would still try to keep you as local as possible, but as you advance, you would probably have to start venturing outside of the region that we had discussed. So, that's something that will be coming up soon, and, you know, something that'll, that'll be a topic of discussion with you guys, I'm sure.
And not to add one more groan to the presentation on sports, but in terms of winter sports, Andy?
Yes.
What is the timeframe that you would need to answer from the school board in terms of what they support?
Yeah, so, I, I don't know this for a fact, but I would anticipate the NHIAA will probably delay the start of winter sports as well, but it's something that we should, I would think that we should start discussing in October. You know, with, you know, winter sports generally start right after Thanksgiving. I don't have information from the NHIAA yet, exactly what things are going to look like, so, but that, that's some, that's a discussion that we, you know, those are some different sports. You know, basketball and hockey and, you know, indoor track and swimming and different sports with different challenges. So, things that, you know, all discussions that will be important to have, you know, I would say in October at some point.
So, can I ask you a question, Andy?
Yes.
How has participation been this year, say, compared to like last year?
So, yeah, that's, that's, that's a good question. We're, we're about 260-strong right now with fall athletes. You know, I think last year, we were around 290, so we haven't seen a huge drop-off. You know, there were some, some, some parents that were concerned and chose to keep, keep their, their kids out, but we didn't see a whole lot of that, really. We haven't. It's been, it's been a pretty strong, pretty strong turnout. It's, it hasn't been a lot different.
Is that number inclusive of the middle school, or is that?
No, the middle school is, I think the middle, what do you, like, two, 200?
We're about 200.
Yeah, about 200 at the middle school. So, we have a lot of athletes.
And last year, Bill, roughly?
I'd say we're about the same.
Yeah.
You know, when I see the numbers of the, of the different sports, we're right around the same. We're down a few, I'd say, but overall, we're right around the same.
Is that based on the final forms registrations that were done back in August, or is that based on actual participants?
We've actually have gone in and, at the high school, and I know Stacy's been working on that, I think she's starting it with the, the middle school as well, taking kids out that haven't, you know, aren't showing up, that some people will register and not actually come out, so we've been starting to remove those. So, it, I mean, it probably maybe end up being a little less, but I don't see a whole lot.
So, that leads me to something I would just, I really just want to understand better, that I was a little surprised at, was this rule about non-district sports and the impact on district sports. So, please understand that I, you know, number one, you mentioned your coaches. Everything I've observed has been incredible. They are really keeping the kids on task with the protocols, reinforcing and reinforcing and reinforcing the importance, and that's fantastic to see, because what they're doing is they're building a culture. And so, I'm just so impressed with all of that. Wanting to understand the rule better, though, because it wasn't part of our discussion back in August, but as Dr. Morse described it at our last meeting, you know, all of your varsity coaches came to you and expressed a desire for this rule, so clearly there was some really concerted thought put into it. I wonder, though, how, I guess, number one, I want to understand it a little bit better. Number two, I wonder if maybe we've created sort of a paradox where we may have created some more complications than we anticipated, or, so, in terms of, it, it seems, if I'm reading it correctly, the rule is different between the middle and high schools. In turn, and so, the one, the one big element that jumped out at me was, my understanding of the high school rule is that if you play a non-district sport, you have to just choose between that sport and the district sport. And that's, there's just sort of a stark line, it's, it's sort of clearer.
You do if it's a club or a team that leaves the southeast region.
Okay.
So, you could theoretically participate on a club or team that is playing, you know, the same teams that we are playing at the high school level.
So, actually, that leads me to something a little further down in my questioning, but maybe the best time to bring it up is now. It seems that the implementation of the rule is varying, because while, for example, we received a forwarded email from our varsity girls' soccer coach that really described the rule, very similar to what Dr. Morse described at the last meeting, you know, from personal experience, I know the boys' soccer players experienced a very different conveying of that rule, so for example- conveying of that rule, so for example, there was no communication to parents from the coach on the rule itself, although there is regular communication. Um, he chose to address it with individuals during group workouts, and again, it's second-hand information, but their underst, or at least the, the kids that I'm familiar with, their understanding was that there was no condition on where your club played, they were simply asked, do you play a club sport? If they raised their hands, they were told, you don't have to leave tonight, but you can't come back next week if you're going to continue playing.
So, so, I, I was hopeful that my email that went out to the, the community clarified that. I have had to answer some, some, some questions from people clarifying that.
Okay.
And that probably, um, you know, uh, you know, there, there could have been that confusion, and, and I think these conversations might have taken place before my email went out.
Okay.
So that could, so I'm, I'm hoping that, that now that things are cleared up and, um, you know, but, you know, certainly, um, you know, I have received some, some questions and people looking for clarity on that.
And the other thing that, and again, second-hand information anecdotal, but the other thing that kids have conveyed is that they've heard that there have been exceptions. Now, it may be a simple confusion around what you're talking about, which is if your club is playing within the defined region, the rule doesn't apply, and so they may be misinterpreting that as an exception, but are there exceptions and is there?
So they're real, they're, they're, well, as far as exceptions go, they would have to come through me, and I have not, we haven't made any exceptions.
You've made any exceptions.
On clubs or teams.
Okay.
So.
So the definition of a club versus a team versus a participation in, in activity, I think that's another area of confusion, could you talk about that?
So, okay, so, are, are you talking about golf?
I've heard about golf.
Yeah, so golf, golf, we, we looked at golf as, as different, um, it's individual, um, there were some, um, there were some circumstances in which these golfers, it's not a team or a club that they're participating on. Um, they, in, in one instance, the golfer is competing with only kids in their, in their threesome from the southeast region.
Okay.
So, um, that was, that was an exception made, um, I guess, if you want to call it an exception, it really doesn't, doesn't really apply to the rule as a club or a team, it was more of an individual.
But they are playing, they are not traveling outside of the region to compete.
No, they do, um, but they were competing with kids that were in, only competing with kids that were in the southeast region.
Yeah, and so I think this is where it gets really confusing for folks to sort of process, um, and so again, I'm just trying to understand so I can advocate as well.
Dan, you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to move on to some other things pretty soon.
Yeah, I know, it's late, but, um, I'd like to understand it, so.
Well, can you move as quickly as you can now?
Okay.
I guess, I, I think it's worth working through, I mean, we, we heard there aren't exceptions, and now it sounds like there are exceptions, so I think, I think it's worth getting through it.
So I guess fundamentally, Tom, I'm trying to make an effort to understand it so I can advocate for it, because the administration felt it was consistent with the board's discussion and direction, um, and I, I, it's hard, I, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, I don't know what our discussion would have been.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Had we, had this proposal been made to us, but I feel like it would have been different, and maybe the outcome would have been different, so I just, I'd like to understand it better.
Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Um, so, the, the geographic restrictions, the other thing that's, that's come up that I'm not sure I know the answer to, is does the geographic restriction determine where it is appropriate to play, or does it also determine, um, where a club may come from to play?
No, it's, it's both. It's where and where the club, the club comes from.
And, okay, so, and then the, the other schools we're playing, that we're all within that same geographic region, we're all restricting our travel to that same region.
I don't know what the other schools are doing, I'm just know what we, we were doing. The, the other schools, as far as that we're playing at the high school level?
Uh, or middle school.
Um, well, Bill could speak better to the middle school.
I think the question is, are we applying the same expectation of the teams that we're playing as a school district as we are for the teams our student athletes are playing on outside of?
Right, we are only playing in the southeast region as a high school.
So I guess the question would be, the teams that we're playing, are they expanding their travel beyond the region, or has there been some?
Well, no, the Dover, Winnicott, and Exeter, Spalding are all playing within this area.
Okay.
Cole Brown, uh, who we are playing, which is in, in our area, they have expanded their travel outside, um, of this area, um, St. Thomas, I believe, has as well.
Okay.
Um, but the, the other, the other schools have, are doing the same thing that we've done.
Okay, and then just one last question, um, for Bill, um, because the middle school has a slightly, well, maybe a slightly different tweak on this, or there's a 14-day period, um, where if you do travel outside of region.
Yep.
You're not sort of given the ultimatum to choose one or the other.
Right.
You're given the option to, uh, not participate in school sports for that 14-day period. Um, i- is that, is that burdensome to manage and keep track of, or?
Well, we're relying a lot on, you know, uh, the honesty of our athletes, of our parents and our coaches, you know, they're, they're asking the questions every day.
Yeah.
So they're asking, they're following the protocol sheet, asking the kids, I've sent notes home to parents to ask, and honestly, I've heard from kids and I've asked them, how come I didn't see you the other day at practice? Oh, I'm going to stay and work with my club, I'm not going to, you know, get involved in, in whatever sport it was they've maybe done in the past. Some other kids have opted to, that I've talked to, have opted to skip on their club, wait on their club, so they can't participate.
Yeah.
In what we're doing. I mean, our model's a little different this year, that's one of the reasons why our rule's a little different. We really don't have any, um, our season's short, it's six weeks, we just started this week, it's been real successful, um, but when this all came down and we decided to have athletics, which I'm happy about, there weren't any schools that were, were in the same boat.
Right.
So when I made all my phone calls to all the teams that I played in the past, they were like, we're doing intermurals, we're not traveling, so that's how we went, for the most part.
Yeah.
Um, the one school that I've talked to that would like to play is Barrington, and I think it'd be a great opportunity for them to play, for our kids to play Barrington at the end. So we're really basing our whole season on intermurals, little, little side, uh, small field games, um, you know, we've broken our cross-country into age groups, you know, by grade, so they're doing some fun stuff for six weeks, the kids are excited about it, and then at the end, we may have a meet, we may have a game, but it would be against Barrington and be local, so that's why ours is a little bit different.
Okay, and they just had a COVID issue.
They shut down their.
Yeah, the elementary, so.
I, I would hate to, but, uh, okay.
I know, we'll have to play that out as time goes on.
Yeah, absolutely, so.
So that's something over time.
Again, guys, thank you for everything you're doing.
Yeah, I just wanted, just one more thing on the golf, um, the way, the way we've, we've saw golf as an individual sport, it's not a team or club mixing with other kids, it, it seems, you know, it's a low-risk sport, um, so felt that was different.
Okay, and that, that seems sensible.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so again, thank you.
Yeah.
Because as Bill said, not everyone has this opportunity right now, and if, if at all possible.
And I think, I think our coaches are rightly concerned, and they want to do everything that they can, they, they feel like they've been given a gift.
Yeah.
Of a season, and they want to do everything they can to protect that, and, you know, I want to stand behind them with that as well.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Is this calendar?
So I think you've seen this calendar before, um, the important dates for you would be the 26th, when you receive the budget book, and then the 29th is the day we spend in Lee with, um, a format to be determined, but basically, these are the dates, and I just wanted you to be aware of them, and we usually vote on that to set them.
Can I ask you a question, Sue?
Sure.
And this is like, I'm probably overthinking this, but it's like, the 18th and the 19th, uh, aside from the fact that we normally have board meetings on a Wednesday, which would be the 18th, uh, why wouldn't you flip-flop and do the budget workshop with the board the 18th, and then the regular board meeting and discussion the 19th? Just because, uh.
We can.
In case you had to vote, I mean, I'm, I'm not sure, I mean, it would seem like you'd have a workshop before you had the meeting, but maybe I'm overthinking.
What, what, I'm sorry, Al, I'm not following.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Where are you on the schedule?
He's beyond, he's on the November 18th.
So I, I'm looking at the schedule.
Yeah.
And if you look at the schedule, November 18th is a regular school board meeting with budget discussion.
Okay.
November 19th is a budget workshop with the board.
He's looking.
So my only question.
He's looking at this, which is the budget specific.
My only question was, why wouldn't you reverse them, but I, I'm probably overthinking.
I guess you gotta look at both of them.
I mean, in the past, we haven't always used all the dates either. We haven't, remember, I think in the past, sometimes we haven't needed that budget workshop because we were well away, well on the way to budget. We could even put it a week ahead, I mean.
Yeah.
It's your call.
The 19th is usually a placeholder, Al.
Yeah, it's like a placeholder.
Well, I mean, I just saw, I was like, oh, boy, let's like, go back to back, but I just, my, my thought process, if you were going to go back to back, I'd rather do the workshop first.
So we could.
Than go into a board meeting, because that gives us the power to like, vote on something.
So we could move that workshop to that week after the 29th or something, you know, I mean, that's a possibility, if you prefer. But the big date, I want to make sure you're aware, the 29th, because that is a daytime, eight to one o'clock. Have that in your calendars.
And something that we've discussed that's intended, but not on here, because it's more of a finance committee activity, is to share, when we get out to that tail end of November, to share where we're at in our process with the towns.
With the towns.
Um, pulling the, you know, the three towns together with the finance committee, kind of the way we did back in the summer.
I'm almost wondering if we didn't need that November 19th, uh, budget, uh, workshop, that's about the time that exactly that we're talking about, meeting, having a finance committee thing, where we brought in the towns and gave them the tax impact. Just keep that as a placeholder, I guess.
Keep it, okay. So we're good?
Good idea.
So do you want to approve this calendar?
Denise?
I'll make a motion to approve the budget processor, the process calendar for budget year 2021, 22.
Moved by Denise, the second, second by Brian. Further discussion on it?
Thank you.
All those in favor? Six. Budget calendars approved. Uh, budget goal update?
That would be you.
You, Al?
I guess this is me. All right, so, uh, the budget goal, uh, let me see if I can pull it up here on my thingy. Um, the budget goal, there's actually one typo in here, it should be all warrant articles, there should be an S on there, because there could be a couple, but, so, I don't think we, I mean, I, this goal has been tortured verbally for so many years, I tried to make it incredibly specific this time, and so the approved budget last year, and I believe this is the fund 10, right, is the $47,326,181, so we use that as our base, and then we're going to look at three options this year, uh, that we'll give you. There are two and a half percent increase off of that, which is 1.183,359,000, 3%, which is 1.419785, and 3 and a half percent, which is 1.656416, so I wrote it down here, there's a difference between those of about, let me see what I say, uh, it's like 400 and...
Eighty thousand.
Just under $500,000 of those. Um, and what we said is that, that three and a half, uh, 3% and 2 and a half percent, it's going to include the fund 10, fund 10 is the operating budget, fund 21, which is food service, fund 22 and fund 23, which is state grants, and all warrant articles that are recommended by the, the school board. Those will all be rolled into those numbers that I just gave you. Um, and I think that's kind of what we tried to articulate in the past. Uh, the last line that I put in there is revenue and reserve accounts, the revenue would be generally, the big one I can think of is the new revenue coming in from the Barrington school from both the increase that we're passing along with them and more students, and the reserve accounts come from the benefit stabilization, the facilities development capital reserve, uh, the facilities development maintenance, uh, fund, and the emergency fund, and that comes out to $1,091,793. And so when you take those revenues and reserve accounts and you offset what they come up with, they have to come up with the two and a half percent number, the 3% number, and the three and a half percent number. If you guys so feel inclined that that's a good goal, the next budget committee, Sue and, and Jim will then work through exact, will start working through those three scenarios. What I would envision as we get to Sue's budget workshop, what we will be doing is talking about both the spending and the revenue offsets to achieve this, what can you live with? And I think we'll begin, uh, to figure out what the final budget will look like. Uh, Dean didn't come here today, but he'd be yelling at me for the tax impact, so I, I did not forget the tax impact. We will not know the tax impact until November. We don't know exactly how the apportionment is going to be divided between the, the towns, we don't know what the state aid is coming, so I, we cannot tell you what the tax thing is. I know the tax impact is important, which is why we're saying in November, we'll have the second discussion. The second discussion is talking to the towns, what exactly, if we do these, what does that look like for you in terms of the tax impact? I think we're going to have a very difficult time, other than, you know, we'll have a very difficult time this year mitigating the tax impact, because I don't think we have the funds to work with it, so it's really going to have to be a conversation with the towns about the best way going forward, particularly if they'll use their reserve capital funds. So that, that's my, my presentation.
Can you comment on why you excluded funds 21, 22, and 23 from that $47.3 million base?
That, that's a really good question, and actually, in terms, to be consistent, it should be, the first one, I just asked Sue, and she gave me that, and I wrote this down, and I didn't include them, if you include that, I believe it's a shade over 48 million, right?
Forty-eight, seven, ninety-one, two thirty.
So if you want to be consistent, Michael, you'd use the $48 million number, and then we'd take two and a half, three, three and a half percent of that.
And I think that's what we should do.
Yeah, I mean, again, I, I did it initially, and I didn't correct.
And I, I didn't have the numbers in front of me last week when we talked about the concept, so.
Yeah, I had the concept, but I got the initial one from Sue, which, the 47 million one is just the fund 10, and for, and then we were, you know, trying to dig around what the money was, and she said 48 million, and I didn't correct it.
So for Denise and Dan and Tom that weren't part of the discussion, the two and a half, three, and three and a half is on all of those accounts together, not just the operating budget?
So those numbers would be slightly higher than what you see here, it'll be.
They'll be slightly higher.
Will, will we figure the two and a half, three, and three and a half based on the 48.8 million dollar?
It's a relatively small account, so, aren't they?
Um, well, it's a.
Well, it's. It's substantial. It's, yeah, it's.
Proportionally, proportionally, it's.
Sue, do you have the three numbers based on, can you?
One million, two nineteen, seven eighty-one.
One million, two nineteen, seven eighty-one.
Okay.
Three is one million, four sixty-three, seven sixty-seven.
Seven sixty-seven.
And then have one, seven seventy.
And then the, the total was 48?
Seven ninety-one, two thirty.
Sorry about this.
So the important thing, though, is what, what we're proposing is all in.
Yeah.
Start with all in, start with everything that we're spending from the operating budget for this year, including the bond payment, including the guild contract that was approved in March, and then the three scenarios we're asking for are two and a half, three, and three and a half percent increases on that.
Exactly.
Then we'll have that back to chew on at the end of Au- in the end of October and into November, as we start to find out how the, how the, um, the apportionment, how the state aid, and how some of our large external-driven expenses like health insurance are going to, are going to shake out, and then we can, as a group, decide how we land.
Don't forget, we're also including warrant articles recommended by the board, so it's going to be the, of what contract is up this year?
Or pass.
Or pass, transportation.
All right, so those will be included in that.
And then there's a second one, it theoretically could have a tax impact, which is the, uh...
The 5%?
The, yeah, taking money from the fund balance and refilling, there is a cap, I believe it was like, slightly over $900,000.
Oh, it was two and a half percent, now it's 5%.
So we'll need to have warrant articles.
So we need a warrant article for that. So that.
Yeah, but that won't, that doesn't, unless we fill that up, it doesn't cost us any money.
But it would have a tax impact because the money would go back to the towns.
But let's cross that bridge.
Yeah, that's.
I'm going to guess that we're not going to have that problem next year.
So do you want a motion to move forward with this?
I want a motion to move forward with this with the revised numbers that Jim has.
You want me to read them one more time?
No, I, I just make sure we get a hard copy of the revised numbers because it's late and I'm not writing them down right now.
Sorry.
Okay. So do you want a motion to move forward?
So I'll make a motion to approve the budget goal as revised with Jim's number, that the 21, 22 school budget will include three options, 2.5%, 3%, 3.5% net increase from the approved fiscal 21, 2021 budget of Fund 10, Fund 21, 22, 23, and all warrant articles. And that you can use revenue and reserve accounts to offset the expenses.
All warrant articles recommended by the board.
All warrant articles recommended by the board. Thank you.
Somebody could always come up later and.
So this is like a step to getting a budget goal, right?
Right. Yes.
Okay.
So I think Brian brought up a point that I think is worth just touching on real quick. So we'll have some articles that we recommend based on negotiated agreements and maybe based on adjusting the fund, the fund balance retention cap. If there are adjustments made to the budget at deliberative or through a petition warrant article, we won't know that until after we have to submit our budget to the public hearing. So that'll all happen after we're done with it anyhow.
Yeah, I don't want to think we have to readjust after all this.
So that was a really great, that was a great catch.
So you moved to move forward with this budget goal. Is the motion, is the second? Second by Michael. I think this is a great step, you know, and this will give us real clarity as to what these three options look like. Are we ready to vote on that? Okay? All those in favor, raise your hand. Six in favor, you can move forward with that budget goal. Thank you for doing all that work. So we have made the decision, sort of, on the selection of new board members. Retirement incentive, kind of a breathtaking list of retirements. Denise?
Well, go ahead. I'll listen and then I'll.
Okay. I was just going to say that the, you know, in meeting the goal that Al just articulated and you supported, part of the structural changes that we would be able to make in the upcoming budget would be to accept the retirement of these people who have reached out to the retirement incentive. I think that it's reasonable to think that we become close to a half million dollar savings. And so I think this is a structural change that was, it would be desperately needed to meet the goal.
All right.
Denise?
So my question is, where is the money? Because that's a lot of money that we have to find to pay the, I mean, I understand over the long term it's savings, but in the short term, it's a huge cost, especially with, when I saw the updated list, which includes, what, like four or five more additional people on it, right?
Sure, yeah. So thanks, Denise. I appreciate that question. Right from the beginning of this budget, we've been running a very lean budget, even though we could be spending a lot more than we are. For example, as we sit here, we have overall close to 20 positions not filled because we're in a remote setting. For example, there are no library aides at the elementary school so far this year, and that model could change depending on what the board decides later in the year. We have about 14 special education positions, parapositions that I haven't filled, again, because the remote model doesn't warrant the need for those positions. We have 2.5 custodial positions I haven't filled. These positions are included in next year's budget, understand, assuming we go back to a traditional format, which I'm hopeful we do. But by running the budget as lean as we are, that provides a cushion in this budget that we didn't anticipate when we, when we built it. In addition, we have a health trust holiday of probably a quarter of a million dollars that we didn't anticipate. We just got that notice like three weeks ago. And so I think we'll be in a really good position to minimally, Denise, pay the sick time that's been accumulated, but I think we can probably end up putting a dent in the actual retirement incentive itself. So I will speak conservatively because if I speak too much, Sue's going to slap my hand in the morning. But I think we positioned ourselves this school year to be in a pretty good place to absorb some of this cost in this budget.
Yeah, I'm just, I am concerned because it is a large list and I, you know, especially as lean as the budget is going to be for next year, to try and find that money, you know, I'm just, I am concerned about that. I looked at the list and I'm like, wait a second, there is way more people now than there were before.
But this was actually our goal, to see if we could draw this large number of people into retirement in order to create the structural change in the upcoming budget.
Well, but it doesn't, it doesn't really help, I mean, it, it's not going to be offset, the cost of the $20,000 incentive is not going to be able to be recouped in just one year.
Oh, I, I think so.
Absolutely will.
But there's positions on here, Denise, that I'll talk later to the board about when we're talking about the budget, that I will not be recommending we replace.
Really?
Yes. That's also part of trying to get us through, if, what I'm trying to avoid, to put it straight, is having to lay anybody off. So this retirement incentive puts, positions us so that hopefully I'm not looking at you a month from now, saying that as we develop this 21, 22 school year, that we have to lay off 15 people. This puts us in a position so that if we're strategic in what we replace, and I obviously will have to replace the majority of the positions here, but there are positions here that I'll be recommending not replacing.
And what, on what, like because of enrollment decline?
Exactly. Yeah, because of enrollment.
That's down the road, all right? Right now, we're approving retirement.
Yes, but I think Denise is needing some structural, why I'm confident that we'll be able to.
Right. I'm concerned about the immediate impact on our budget because, yeah, it's a lot of.
But that is immediate, right? If, if these people retire at the end of the current school year, we will not budget for replacing one or two of them, or whatever the number.
But I didn't know that.
Right, right, but that's.
They wouldn't be replaced, and that's why.
That's why it's important.
If we were replacing every single one of these, then it would.
Well, there's still some savings, though, that comes out because the new hire is significantly lower. I think that's what Jim is predicting. It's actually a fairly large sum of money.
Right, and it's not just the base salary, it's the multiplier is on top of that of overhead and retirement.
I know we're talking about the budget, but I don't want to let it go without saying, you know, this is the right thing to do, but there are some amazing teachers on this list.
Absolutely.
And I just want to point that out. We're not just losing positions, we're losing just some unique talent. And, you know.
Absolutely true, Dan.
You know, I hope, I hope this works well for them and their life goals, right? But for the district, although I support the incentive and what we need to do, I just want to make it known that this is, this is a sacrifice, so.
I mean, ironically, when I was walking from Kenny's service, I was talking to Dave Irvin, who's on there, and I said, so you're retiring? And, you know, and I laughed and said, man, will we ever go to China again after, after this? But he said that he was, some of these people, it really represents a time that they're looking at a, you know, he said, I'm ready for all these other things to do. And I said, we're going to miss you. And I, I look at those years of service there, and there's a lot, and I just look at it, you're right, Dan, there's, it's a big loss, and it's sad, but unfortunately, I think it's to the benefit of the district and to the benefit of a lot of these staff members, too.
Can I go back to, follow on to Denise's question? So if we accept these tonight, when you build the budget for next year, will you build in the retirement incentives into the fiscal year 22 budget that we see at the end of October?
We would.
I'm sorry.
We would.
We would, yeah, yeah.
We would build them in in a way that we wouldn't cripple ourselves.
Right, right, but we'll see, we'll see the impact.
Yes.
It won't be a surprise at the end of the road. It'll be something that you build in from the beginning.
We'll see where the money's coming.
Yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry, did we have a motion to approve these?
Not yet, I don't think.
Okay, can I have a motion to approve these? Brian?
Motion to approve.
Moved by Brian, it's her second. Second by Michael. Further discussion? This is a huge loss, it certainly is. A lot of history here. Are we all ready to vote? All those in favor of approving this list for the retirement incentive, please raise your hand. Six or five? Yes? All those opposed? One opposed. Vote passes, five to one. Questions the board needs answers to regarding increasing student participation in schools.
So the reason I have this on the agenda is October 21st will come very, very quickly. And that would be the place where we had put a flag in the sand saying, the board wants to review Phase 1, how's it worked? What does Phase 2 look like? And in order to get there, I thought that it would be incredibly helpful for me and the administrative team to know fundamentally what it is that board members want answered in order to make an informed decision on the 21st. And, you know, the, we chose the 21st because it gave, it gives us a couple of weeks before the beginning of the second quarter. So the idea here is that, you know, the administrators would provide the information you're seeking. So tonight is the beginning of that questioning strategy. We can have this on the agenda again in October, the first meeting in October. But what I'd like to do is make sure that when we hit October 21st, I'm providing the board with the information it wants to take us to the next step. And the administrators, of course, will be ready to give you recommendations in terms of how they see us growing with students. The goal is always, can we bring more students in? And so the whole idea behind Phase 1 was to build our capacity and to basically determine whether, you know, COVID was going to wipe us out or whether we could continue to incrementally grow. And so, you know, sitting here and hoping that COVID doesn't resurrect itself, you know, between Halloween and Thanksgiving, you know, I just want to make sure I'm giving the board the information that you need to be informed and be thoughtful in the next phase as you were in the first phase, so.
All right.
I assume that administration is already working on the next phase as far as what it looks like.
Administration is beginning to have.
Or discussions.
More discussions about, the concept that we continuously to talk about is what's the next step? What are the implications of the next step? You know, for example, you know, I've had a chance to talk to Tom and Michael about this a little bit. We're right at a very delicate balance between, on the K through 4 model. We have 1/3 of the kids out and 2/3 of the kids in. You know, question that we heard tonight is can we move forward to a full-day model at the elementary, given that the class sizes might be, you know, 12 or 10 or whatever? But if there's a shift of interest from the remote parents to coming in, we have very limited space to have them come in at this point because we've set up six-foot social distancing. And so there's, there's lots of implications around that. Would we have to use the high school if we wanted, if we ended up with more elementary kids coming in than remote? So those, those are the kind of complicated thought processes that we're informally having right now administratively, the what-ifs, the what-ifs, the what-ifs. So, yeah, there's just so many factors, staffing factors. You know, with over 50 people out due to health reasons, how far can we push the envelope in terms of having staff on site? And what does that mean, you know, at the middle school or the high school? Middle school having the most staff that are impacted by health concerns related to COVID. And so staffing the middle school would be pretty complicated if we went from a remote model to an onsite model, if it was 100% onsite. So someplace between what we're doing now and what our staffing would allow us to get to. So, yes, we're having those conversations, Brian, and in trying to, trying to prepare ourselves for the presentation on the 21st, but we know that the board itself will have questions that they want answered in order to address, you know, our growth.
Because I think one of the things they got to look at, too, is at some point, the state's going to change the guidelines as far as, all right, it's six feet now, but we feel comfortable going to three feet. Obviously, that changes the dynamics a lot. So, you know, that's probably something that they should have as Plan B or C, you know, is, you know, can we do that? And can we, do we have the ability to take that elementary school model and implement it at the middle school with the half days? I know transportation will still be a nightmare, but, and are there, are we having issues now with parents that are saying, I'm done with remote, I want my kid in? Because I'm running into that now, so.
Yeah, not, not so much that. What we're getting is the emails that I've been sending you related to parents who want a bigger presence, you know, like we heard tonight, you know, can we bring more kids in? Can we bring them in faster? I think that, you know, again, we get into the capacity and of the buildings, we get into the health of the buildings, the middle school. So there's just a lot of complicated factors that we have to consider.
And maybe we can enlarge what we define as a targeted group.
Yes, that is actually happening as we speak. So the first three weeks of orientation was what I would call a very soft start, but we're already seeing, the middle school is an example, Jay has whole classes coming in on a rotating basis, and he's also started to bring in targeted learners. The high school has brought in targeted learners and is working toward bringing, for example, the freshmen in on the 30th. So the high school startup, because of the complicated model of course selections, is always harder to increase the student population, but Suzanne's already going in that direction, Jay's already going in that direction. So by the time we get to the 21st, the number of kids being serviced will look a lot different than it is today.
And the, also the, there are cleaning processes that are being advanced, I'm sure you've heard.
Yeah, it's cleaning processes.
Longer-term, longer-term things that require, I don't want to say less cleaning, just a different style of cleaning that.
Yeah.
Doesn't require as much manpower.
Yeah, Jim.
Another issue is the manpower, which is a huge cost.
Jim's crew has been doing a fantastic job. The nurses and the principals, quite frankly, are taking it right between the eyes as they follow the COVID plan that we have. So suspected COVID, you know, which would be any of the criteria that looks like a cold or a flu, looks like COVID. And so we're saying to parents, you know, you need to have your child tested. So people aren't responding really well to that. And so our nurses on the front line and our principals on the front line are having to handle, you know, very delicate situations. Everybody's doing it respectfully, but it's pretty intense conversation. The email I sent out last Wednesday as an example, one paragraph took 90 minutes to write because we have to be FERPA compliant, HIPAA compliant, and yet we still have to inform the community, you know, that we had an adult who was, who did contract COVID because we have an obligation to inform in our plan. And quite honestly, THHS said, well, you don't have to tell them. And I said, oh, yes, we do. Because that's exactly what we can't do in this district, is, is have somebody who is COVID positive and not tell anybody.
Well, I think the most important line that you use, I'm finished with this. The most important line that you have in that email is the last one, which is, keep in mind, or whatever it says, we can't share any personal information with you. And I think people are finally, they're finally, most people are finally starting to get it, so.
I couldn't speak more highly of our nurses and principals right now, I have to tell you.
Denise, you have a question?
Yeah, well, and just in terms of information I would like, is, I would like a list of, like, dates of when different groups were brought in, like, for example, the orientation dates, the dates, like, when 9th grade is coming in or what have you. Because I don't have, you know, I don't have a child in the district, so it's, I don't get those types of things. So I think it would be helpful to see sort of how much traffic is already coming into the, into the building, you know, for whether it's orientation meetings or, you know, like I say, the 9th grade, I know. I know you just mentioned is coming in, that sort of thing.
Sure.
You know, the seniors coming in for SATs or what have you. Just so we have an idea of beyond sort of the bare skeleton of what we had said, like what groups have been in. And then, the other thing I was wondering, again, it has to be HIPAA compliant, but I would like to have the number of students who have had to be either, like, sent home because maybe they're, you know, they developed symptoms during the school day or, you know, that type of thing, just to get a sense of how many students that were having to, or they're called in because they have a symptom. And it's not necessarily COVID, but it's a symptom, and just to get a sense of how many.
Do what, the staff as well, Denise? The number of staff?
Sure, staff as well, absolutely.
And quarantine, like, anyone else who's, like, you say, "Okay, you're out."
Right.
Right, the quarantine, right.
The precautionary quarantine.
How many people have had to be in quarantine? Because I think that would help us see whether expanding in person is manageable, given, you know, how much it's generating in terms of issues, even as limited as we are right now.
I think the questions I get are, what are we moving towards? What are the criteria that would allow us to move toward that? Is there, like, a number, a level of community spread? Although I think that number gets, you know, because with UNH and I don't know, you know. But is there, are there, like, metrics that we're going to use to say, "Okay, we can move to more inclusive models in our schools"? So, I think that's a question I hear. Then, obviously, and this is what you talked to, what is that next step? I mean, is the next step to allow, say, K1 to go full-days? Is the next step to try to get K4 to go full-days? Is the next step to get, you know, to use the elementary model in the middle school? Is the next step to go two days a week in the middle school? You know, each, you know, kind of like Suzanne, you know. Is the model to have bigger targeted groups, but not, but to still be primarily remote? You know, like, what is the next step? And I think, you know, you could have more cautious next steps and more aggressive next steps. I think that's what I keep hearing. And maybe just one other thing, and I'll... And then, I think with the number of people in the middle school who have a condition that means they can't go in, does that mean the middle school is perpetually on, you know, handicap? I don't mean handicap in a way, but I mean limited by that? Or are you going to have to find ways to have an inclusive middle school, given that you have these people? I mean, in other words, you're going to have this permanent model, but you can't bring people in. So, I mean, how are you going to accommodate that? So, those are the kinds of things I hear, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead. Actually, the first one you grabbed, I was like, exactly what is, what is the criteria for expansion? And I think that needs to be clearly articulated. Jim, you hit on what I have heard somebody saying, "I think I made a mistake with the remote." So, given the current staffing that you have at the elementary level, what could you accommodate under our current model of people re-entering? I think that's a really important, I mean, there's a bunch of people who are talking about expansion of hours and all that, but if suddenly 30 or 40 kids are going to come back into the system, that changes the equation completely. And then, the second one, I kept, what are the expanded targeted groups? And what could they be, given the current staffing limitations? And who is the next priority? We've done our first run with the ninth graders, fifth graders and all that, but who's the next rung and what can we accommodate?
So, one of the reasons I voted the way I did in elementary was because of concern about how mask-wearing and how meals and snacks would progress. So, I'm interested in how, and particularly the elementary students are doing with the mask protocols. And I know we have a very limited number of students that are eating in the schools. A lot of the food's being taken home, but there are some that are eating in, and how is that working as well? Along with that, utilization of classroom space, transportation, and the school nutrition program. So, how many, especially at, I think, especially at, well, maybe all four school buildings. But, there probably are some classrooms that are not being utilized right now because of the number of students that are remote. And I think that's interesting input for us to have. And competitive intelligence. So, in the pipeline of what are, what are you hearing about? When other districts are considering making changes? And what direction are other superintendents thinking of going in? I think that's very useful input for us.
Is that peer pressure?
It's not really competitive intelligence, because it's...
Do we have anyone on the inside to give us valuable information?
And my last question is, if we were to change, if we were to change things up at all, I think we would be in a position of having, asking parents to reregister again. At least some segment of parents to reregister. Before we do that, are we going to want to do a survey like we did this summer? And if we are, the timing for that is going to be a little bit tough. Like, it needs to go out right after the next board meeting, probably, in order for that to be useful input, so.
Well, in that, Michael, if you did a survey like that, I think it would be important that you, first of all, define the criteria. If we meet this criteria, would you do this?
I'm not even sure what question I would ask at this point.
I'm just, I'm trying to figure out, because I think they're trying to figure out the staffing and kids coming in.
The fundamental question at the elementary school would be, do you want to change your model?
Right.
Because that turns everything on its head really fast. In middle school and high school, those models can evolve relatively easily from remote to more onsite. But, the elementary model is such a delicate balance right now that if there is a shift, we need to know about it in advance so that I can tell you what that shift would be on the 21st.
Yeah.
And then, what those implications are for our ability to adjust.
Right, right.
So, it's really the elementary model that we need to know whether people are thinking about switching. And then, as, you know, you all have alluded to, if that model changes, then it might change people's opinion on what choice they're making. For example, if Tom's idea of a K1 going all day, that could change the dynamics dramatically in K1 from, you know, the hybrid model to, "Oh, I'm in." Because, you know, all of a sudden, it's a much different model. So, I think these are, this is really super helpful, thank you very much.
Other questions?
Just one quick one. How many, it's kind of along the lines of what everyone else has been saying, but how many more per grade can we fit in with what we have now? I know what we did, we literally went to every classroom to see, how many more spots do we have?
Oh, at each grade level?
At each grade level. If, yeah, if somebody says, "Alright, I'm done with remote, I want to come in", and you're going to have to say, "Alright, I can only fit three in this grade", you know, or four in this grade. So, I'm sorry, go ahead. Let me open that up. And then, I want to see kind of what works well, what's worked, what's went well?
Yeah.
You know, what really has worked, what have we learned? What have, what, I want to see if they saw an opportunity that maybe we can use that we didn't think of. You know, something along that line, like, hey, maybe we, from what I've seen, we can do this. I don't know, I mean, I'm not there every day, so. But, I'm sure they have something that they would like to, that they could make more efficient or say, "You know what, we have the capability of doing this, we have capacity."
Michael, so just to follow up on your first question there, Brian, about space. Are you talking about physical space, are you talking about class size or both?
Well, how many can we fit safely in a classroom, social distancing? Because I know, like, we have some classrooms that I can fit three more in, I have some that I'm maxed. Or I got to take file cabinets out of a room just to make room for one more.
Right, right. Well, I think we have to consider both, because at least in the current model, there are some classes at Moheramut that were a teacher, they only have 12 at a time, but there's 24 kids in the class already, so.
It's third grade.
Right, but if all of a sudden, six people in that grade say, "You know what, I want to, I don't want to do remote anymore, I want to come in, but we only have four openings."
Right.
We can only let four in. So, you know, unless the state changes their mandates and we agree to it, so.
Thank you very much.
Great. Motion to approve Oyster River Department heads and advisors. Denise?
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Denise, her second. Brian, discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, those are approved. Denise, you want to talk about policy?
Sure. We reviewed some sort of, I guess we would call them, kind of dry. Not a lot of dramatic stuff in a policy committee meeting. Some of them, we just felt like we didn't need to change them at all. For example, GBA, which was equal opportunity employment. The only thing we were doing was updating the references. GBB, employment involved in decision-making, no changes. GBE, employee rights and responsibilities, no change. GBEBA, staff dress code, no change. So, really, the only thing that we did really feel like we needed to bring forward was one for deletion, which, let me make sure I have it on my FL on my list, but I just want to make sure it lines up with what's here. Right, so we felt like there was one policy that just didn't really seem to add anything, and it's an optional policy. So, that's policy FL, retirement of facilities. We felt like the, everything that was included in that policy was already included elsewhere. Plus, we don't anticipate having any retirement of facilities for quite a long while. So, that one, we decided to bring forward for deletion. And then, policy FF, naming of facilities, we did make some changes too. So, that is being brought forward for first read. So, unless there's any questions, I'll go ahead and make a motion.
I actually do, well, some comments. I know we don't, I know we don't do our documents. But, I'm just going to give you some advice. So, particularly, I love the unanimous consent idea. I just don't like where you put it on the agenda.
I was going to ask you that.
So, I would flip, I'd put the unanimous consent should go before the discussion. And the reason I say that is that if you do it after, unanimous consent, the vast majority of time that you do it, there is nothing that goes through. But, and then, when somebody pulls something off the unanimous consent, the vast majority of time, it's a very small thing that's there. If it's larger, we'll kick it, it usually say, "Okay, you know what", there was once with a putting in like a pipeline or something like that, and that got pulled because it was big enough an issue and that came along. But, if you do the unanimous consent after the discussion items, you'll minimize the ability to do that. It's usually small and you're going to work through unanimous consent quickly. It's better placed above the discussions. So, that's just my...
I thought it might be too late.
It is, it just, it flows better, again, 99.9% of the time, it doesn't make a difference. Everyone goes for it, and even if they do pull something from the unanimous consent, it's very quick. But, I think you'll lose something if you put it after the discussion items.
Could we?
So, our intent would be to use that new framework, that adjustment, at the next meeting.
And then, the only other thing I...
Well, you have to do it for sector...
It's not our document, so it really, we put it in front of them for this very reason, because it's your, our document, it's not the district's, it's how you manage your agenda. So, it doesn't require a vote, but it does, I just wanted to make sure that you guys saw it and Al's point is well-taken. So, our idea would be to use that framework, we're coming right up.
Plus, it has to be approved every meeting anyway. If anyone thought about it and had concerns, they could amend.
I only had one more thing, I don't mean to interrupt you.
I guess, are we okay to go ahead with this, with that shift to?
Well, we're not, the one that, I mean, that's actually separate because for first read, it was just going to be, oops, I just lost it. FF, naming of facilities, I think that was the only one for first read.
So, I just have a...
And then, oh, I, okay, all right, so agenda format and policy was also for first read.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
But it's an R...
I was thinking that that wasn't actually...
It's an R document, so we normally don't approve the R document.
Right, I wasn't thinking of it as being a first read for that one because it, like, it is an R document, just in terms of looking at it and getting, you know, getting agreement as to whether we wanted to do that. So, I'd like to just go forward, first of all, and just say, I'd like to make a motion for first read for FF, naming of facilities, and then for delete, FL for deletion. I don't know if I can combine that or if I have to do that separately, I'm not sure.
Because this is a pair then, right?
Right, so FF, naming of facilities for first read, and FL, retirement of facilities for deletion.
I'll second for discussion.
Second, moved as a parent, second by Brian.
Yep.
Are we okay to vote on these two?
We're retiring the policy on retirement of facilities.
Yep.
Double retirement.
Does it get an incentive?
Can I ask a question on the naming of facilities? Just to explain, it's very, very simple because it's basically two sentences. But, so how does the procedure work? So, if we want to name a certain part of a building that may or may not be under construction right now, what, so I, we have to make a recommendation to the superintendent, and then it goes to the school board. Is that how I'm reading this correctly?
I would bring the recommendation.
But someone has to make the recommendation, so, okay.
You could have a discussion.
Okay.
Are you okay with it? Okay, all in favor of those two, the pair of policies that Denise has moved? All in favor, please raise your hand. Six in favor, those two are...
So, can I ask one more question? Because like, as I read through your minutes, something that, there's a thing in there which, at this point in the meeting, a discussion ensued pertaining to the process of the possible feedback by the board before the first read happens. And it's like, in my mind, it's not that I worry about a discussion before first read. I think, I think there's, I think the non-discrimination thing is an example. There's certain policies that are important enough, they should come to the board to start with. The one in my mind that didn't work so well was the searching of automobiles at the high school. That should have come to the board first, as a whole. If there's a controversial policy, instead of working it in the policy committee and then having it come to us for first read, I like the heads-up coming to the board initially. And the work-through really should be more at the board level. I know it's going to be rare usually that it's there, but I just want to instill that. Because when it gets dropped at the end of agenda and it's a controversial policy, especially, you know, hopefully we never go to 1027 again the rest of my life, it's difficult to discuss it, and I think it makes it more challenging. So, I just want to make sure that if, that there's a threshold of a controversial policy that the boards, it starts at the board first. We could have the policy committee kind of grind through it, but I don't like it when it comes kind of preformed to us in the first read.
So, what, oh, you want to...
Well, I mean, just, we spent a considerable amount of time talking about just sort of creating a window of opportunity for any board member to offer suggestions or ask questions about any policy before the committee took it up. So, the first thought would be that any member of the board could flag any policy for what you described, which is, you know what, I think this is a bigger matter and the full board should discuss it before the committee digs into it. So, that would be one option. But, are you describing something more process-oriented? And how would that determination be made, I guess is the question.
That's a great question, I just, I mean, to me, you've had this discussion of, you're sitting there when you're discussing a policy at the policy committee. I think there's a certain point, and I'm going to give you the benefit of discretion, that you say, "You know what, this is a controversial policy."
Well, and the committee has that discretion, I feel.
I just, I think that, that needs to be a stopgap, that you do that, that you don't grind through. At that point, you say, "You know what, we need to come back." Whether you do it, I mean, the traditional one would, you'd be, okay, we grinded the thing, we go through this stuff, and we do it first read. But, the way this generally works at the end of a meeting, and as I'm trying to go through there, it doesn't facilitate the discussion that it's merited that there. That really, if it's a controversial policy, should be coming up in the discussion items, and we have time to really talk about it.
So, again, what Dan was, and what we decided was that we would, so for example, it didn't work, like... work like this time, but normally, we would try and bring, okay, at policy committee, the next policy committee, we're going to be discussing these particular policies. And it would sort of be an announcement to everyone to look at those policies, and if you saw, oops, wait a minute, you know, this looks like this could really be something we want to discuss for a full board, that you could actually let Jim know that. So that when we got into policy committee, we would sort of have a heads up that that might be something that the, you know, full board might want to discuss.
Yeah, that would work. I just, I just don't like it when, I think the current way that it's structured is not very good. It's like, that you have the policy committee going through, they're, they're toiling away at a policy, and then it comes at the end of a meeting, and it just doesn't facilitate the red flag that should be there. And to me, the one that really was egregious was the searching at the middle school. I was like, it came to us as a fully formed thing that was being asked to be voted on, and it, it was a bigger issue that skipped the board. I want to stop. I don't want that to occur again.
And I think we can take that kind of a small step further. And I think a lot of the feedback that, that the policy committee may get is not really rise to that level. But it would still be nice to know what the policy committee was going to be looking at, and if, if there's minor feedback from any of us, we can send that to Jim before the policy committee meets, so they have that input when they start chewing on the policy. And hopefully, we can get it done in one pass.
Well, you just need to know in advance kind of what policies are going to be discussed.
Exactly. And that's what we came up with, is that that might be.
You know, on the agenda, you know, next, these, these three policies are going, are coming up.
Exactly.
Right. That should be pretty easy to do. And then.
Right.
Somebody wants to just not pay, you know, not, not engage until the first read, that's fine. If they want to kind of engage earlier, that's, that sound good?
I would mean.
Okay.
I just wanted to, I hate to extend the meeting, but I just wanted to go from that.
Okay, that's fine, that's fine.
And then, then to get back, because I'm sorry, I really meant to split out the agenda format. I didn't mean, I, I was going to, I, I saw that as a different, a different item. I wasn't looking at it for first read, because my understanding was, since it is in our document, it was just something that we sort of, as opposed to making a motion for first read, that we would just agree that that is going to be, you know, our new agenda format.
The board voted to request that unanimously. So I think, I think we can go ahead with that. Like Dan says, if we want to change it, we can always change it, and change it any part of the agenda of the meeting if we want to. So, so I'm going to assume that that's, that's going to be the new format.
Okay.
Right?
Yes.
Okay.
But with that, I think we're done with policies.
Can I just ask one thing for the policy committee for the future? Can we look at the, is there a policy on manifest? On how we do manifest? Or is that just a procedure that we set up?
I believe there is, because I think we had to change it when we stopped doing it as a full board, didn't we?
Right. Well, as a quorum of the board.
Or at least can we make an agenda item if it's not in the future to discuss?
Yeah, and I, I would support that as well. If there's an option. So one of the advantages I'm hoping we can achieve is that the full board can have an efficient way to review manifest.
I don't know what the outcome will be, but it's, at least we should open up for discussion.
Can we just have the policy committee review the manifest?
Totally. I think that's a great.
That'd be good.
We only have two members in the policy committee.
Right, but we're going to have a new board member. So my thinking is, it probably makes sense, and just like Sabat.
So you're ready to go, you're okay going with two for a while?
Well, yeah, I guess because the new board member won't be on board for the next, but we only meet once a month. So our next, our next policy committee meeting, I don't have the date in front of me, is like mid-October. But is it? Oh, October 8.
Yeah.
But don't, don't, don't go one for and one against, it won't work.
And is it fair to put a brand new board member straight into policy?
Oh, yeah.
It's a good way.
Didn't you do that?
Possibly go.
I got sent to the, oh, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
No, but I.
So wait, wait.
I think we should, I think we should wait in case, maybe that individual has no interest or it doesn't work or whatever.
That's how we'll decide.
Okay, okay, good. You're okay with that. Any other committee updates? No? Public comment? I think our public has vanished. Closing actions. So we also have like a, the meeting that we set up, and is it, was it the 30?
Ah, the 7th is Barrington, a joint meeting with Barrington. Is that here or at Barrington?
Here.
I'm just trying, just want to recap what the meeting, the meeting that we're going to be interviewing the candidates is.
The 30th.
The 30th.
At 7:00.
At 7:00.
At 7:00, okay.
And we'll have finance before that at 5:30.
We have manifest, maybe we could ask if we could do manifest.
Now, I, somebody, somebody asked him whether that meeting is going to be televised, and I said, it doesn't have to be televised, but it has to be public.
Yes.
Okay? So we can advertise it, you know, announce it as a public meeting. Would it be, it's not a workshop, a public meeting, with sole purpose of interviewing those two candidates, so it should have to have access to the public, but it won't be televised? That, okay.
And then you expect to have the vote taken at the October 7th meeting, right? That's not part of that?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah, that's, that's the plan. So I think we're ready to adjourn. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Moved.
Moved by Michael.
Second.
Dan? All in favor? Six in favor? For adjourn.